The March 5th, 2014 meeting of the city councils called to order this meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable, channel two, and are closed captioned for our hearing impaired viewers. Please note customers of CenturyLink can view this program in high definition on channel 1002, and some customers of Cox Communications who do not have a cable box can view this meeting on digital channel 89.5. The council meetings, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the internet at www.lasvegasnevada.gov. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV, channel two, in the web. The Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 1:00 PM. This building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double doors to the terrace, and down the back staircase. For anyone that has difficulty with stairs, please check with a marshal or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Street. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it is safe to re-enter the building. For public comment related to the items on the agenda, citizen participation, and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card which you can complete and submit to the city clerk. Cards are available online in the clerk's office or at the rear of the chambers. If you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking on a public comment, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If there is anyone present today that has need for hearing impaired equipment, please see the city clerk staff. If you parked in the parking garage across the street and did not receive a validation ticket as you enter chambers, please exit to your right and then see the security personnel at the entrance. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given by Bishop James Rogers, Senior, Greater New Jerusalem Baptist Church, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. I have the Father again, we thank you for this awesome opportunity. Your word declares that in the beginning was the Word, and the Word was with God, and the Word was God. The same was in the beginning with God. All things were made by Him, and without Him was not anything made that was made. That was in Him was life, and this life really was the light of men, and it shined in the darkness, and the darkness could not stop its truth. Today, we ask for your divine intervention in this city council meeting. The same life that you gave to all things in the beginning, we ask that you give that life to us today. The light that shined in the darkness of misunderstanding and confusion, we ask that that light would shine among us today to bring clarity of mind, clarity of thought, and that would be a dialogue between us and you that would cause this city to continue to do the great work that this council has been duly elected to do. We ask for the strength of this council, we ask for the wisdom of this council in a very special way. Now, we thank you for what you've done for us thus far, and we now give you praise for what you shall do in this meeting today. As we depart, we believe that you'll go with us. Bless each and every one that's present, that the minds will be on one accord. This prayer today, we do pray in the name of Jesus. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everyone. How are you? Good, good. This is a time, beginning of the city council meeting, where we recognize some great people who live in this city and make this a wonderful place to live. So our first recognition is going to be for Citizen of the Month. For our first item, I have the pleasure of recognizing our March Citizen of the Month. This month, we're honoring someone who really understands the service that Las Vegas is so famous for. I'd like to invite down here to the podium, the owner of Yellow Checker Star Cab, Bill Schrankel. Bill, are you here?
He's not.
He's not? Okay, then I would like to invite field supervisor Joel Wilden. Is that you, Joel? All right, give him a nice round of applause. Come on down here, Joel. And you are representing the owner, Bill Schrankel. Okay. Everyone, please give a nice round of applause to Yellow Checker Star's Driver of the Year and our Citizen of the Month, Gerardo Gamboa. Gerardo, come on down here. This is a great story. Gerardo picked up a poker player at the Cosmopolitan two days before Christmas and dropped him off at the Palms Place. The poker player accidentally left behind a brown paper bag with $300,000 in cash and left it in his cab. $300,000 in cash. How big was that? Really big. Okay. This is the best part. Gerardo turned the money over to a supervisor, and the poker player was located and verified, and the money was returned to him. As a reward, the poker player gave Gerardo $10,000, showing that good deeds are still recognized. I want to thank Gerardo on behalf of the City of Las Vegas and the entire city council here. Our city has known the world over for hospitality, and because of that, Las Vegas is the number one tourist destination in the world. It's through the efforts of our great service industry workers like Gerardo, who returned $300,000 in cash, that we have such an outstanding reputation. Gerardo, I want to present you with this beautiful frame certificate. Thank you, Councilman Ross. And to the left over here, as Caramel reveals the Carol Merrill. Everybody remember Carol Merrill? Let's Make a Deal. We're going to have at City Hall on Main Street for the entire month of March, this sign with your name on it, so you can go by there and take a picture, without $300,000. But you have $10,000. So give him a nice round of applause. Do you want to say something?
He does, he does. We're just so proud of this guy, man. He is so full of honesty and integrity, and a true picture of what our cab drivers are like in this town. You know, we get a bad rap by the media, but it's full of hardworking people who are just trying to put money on the table, so it's his day. It's been a few months for him now. This thing went international. We got stories from Yemen, Hong Kong, Brazil. So a true ambassador of Las Vegas, so we're proud to have him.
First of all, I just want to say thank you very much for honoring me, and thank you for my bosses, Bill Schrankel and Joel Wilden, and to our commissioner, Steve Sessolak. Thank you.
You're a great man, so why don't we come over here and take a picture with all of us by the sign. $300,000 in small bills, it sounds like. That is amazing. Good job, thanks. Okay, our next item, I have the pleasure, and the entire city council has the pleasure of recognizing an outstanding team of city employees. The Action Team Award recognizes a team of employees who strive to be superheroes in a workplace, meeting our values of action, which stand for achievement, creativity, teamwork, integrity, and ownership now. This team is a fantastic example of how multiple city departments can work together to make something great happen in our community. As you know, we just had Life is Beautiful. It was an incredible music, food, and art festival that took place in the heart of our downtown in October 2013. Bands such as The Killers, The King of Leon, Imagine Dragons, top chefs like Cat Cora, Rick Moonen, and Scott Connet thrilled nearly 60,000 spectators that came to downtown Las Vegas. The city has never hosted a festival of this size and scope, not to mention within the confines of the heart of the city, in and around businesses, homes, and streets. We had a great team working behind the scenes to ensure that this festival came off without a hitch, from permitting to road closures, to business notifications, to public safety, media relations. This team put in hours and hours to make sure this weekend was successful. I'd like to introduce to you this team of city employees who are behind the scenes, not recognized until we recognized them today as the Team of the Month for Las Vegas. So if I call your name, would you please come down here? From Public Works, Dottie Batson, Christina Hayes, Phil Garcia, and Jason Jackson. Our emergency manager, Carolyn Levering. Carolyn? There she is. Carolyn's coming down. From Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, we have Jay Asibo, Greg Crawford, Paul Smith, and Walter From Planning, Minerva Gomez. Minerva? From Building and Safety, we have Randall Cummings. From Administrative Services, we have Sherry Farkas. From the City Attorney's Office, we have John Radilla and Terry Porticello. From Economic and Urban Development, our Parking Zar, that's your official title, Zar, Brandy Stanley. Brandy, come on down. From Operations and Maintenance, we have Sean Mahan. And last but not least, from our Office of Communication, Jennifer Davies and Jace Radke. Come on up here. Let's give them a big round of applause. Our Team of the Month, City of Las Vegas. I've heard Rohan Chandri, the creator of Life is Beautiful, speak about his experience in putting this event together, and without fail, he always mentions the work of the Team of the City of Las Vegas. That impression is part of the reason that we have Life is Beautiful. We'll be back in October, and that is a big deal for our city. So you guys are going to be doing this again next year. How's that? All right. So thank you very much for your hard work. We have some certificates here, and I have here that Dottie Batson would like to say a few words. There you are. Oh, Doty, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Council and Betsy, for the nomination. Behind this very unique event was this awesome group of folks that addressed issues such as medical, safety, security, licensing, and communications, and we just feel very fortunate to have been part of this event.
Okay. Thank you very much. Here, Doty. So, great job, all of you, and we're going to see you next year for a second Life is Beautiful. So thank you very much. Good job.
We'll have to like squeeze in and maybe go.
All right, come on up here. All right, the City of Las Vegas Action Team. Okay, next, I would like to recognize the Las Vegas Mayor's Cup. As many of you know, we have probably the largest soccer tournament in probably the world here in the City of Las Vegas, and it's called the Las Vegas Mayor's Cup. And it's held in October, and it's held in February. In October, it's the little kids. In February, it's the boys and girls that are 13 to 18 years old. The tournament was held the weekend of February 15th and 17th in the City of Las Vegas, and it was a partnership between the City of Las Vegas and the Downtown Soccer Club. And the head of the Downtown Soccer Club, which is probably the main guy for the Mayor's Cup, is Roger Tabor. So Roger, why don't you come on down here? Give a nice round of applause. This guy works so hard to make sure that this is a successful tournament. We had, that weekend, we had 490 teams participate. 60 teams were local, the rest from the United, the rest of the United States, and we also had teams from Mexico, Canada, Panama, Guatemala, the Dominican Republic, Cayman Islands, Haiti, France, Japan, Brazil, Colombia, Australia, and Germany. These are some of the best players in the world and the United States and the City of Las Vegas that play in this tournament. Not only is it great soccer, but it's estimated that this tournament brings in about $18 million into our economy that weekend, from hotel rooms, to eating, to renting cars, to buying stuff, because there's a lot of stuff to buy here in Las Vegas. So $18 million gets pumped into our economy. So we not only have some great soccer, but we're putting people to work because of this particular tournament. The finals were played in the City of Las Vegas at Betty Wilson Soccer Complex, which happens to be in my ward at Lake Mead and Tenaya. And if you really want to watch some great soccer, these are the two weekends, in October and February, where you can come out and see some of the best soccer players. In this particular weekend, there's actually college coaches and scouts that come out to actually see who these players are and recruit them to their particular college and university. What I'd like to do is recognize our City of Las Vegas winners for that weekend, and give them each a certificate of recognition. We got a pile for each one back here. Some of these teams could attend, some of these teams could not attend because of commitments with school, so I appreciate the couple that could show up this morning. So first of all, we have Girls Under 13 Downtown LVSC 01 Academy, Coach Pedram Mahenpi, and I believe they are here. So Coach, why don't you come on down here and collect your certificates? And yeah, bring your team on down here, too. Number one out of 490 teams. Pretty amazing. Okay, our next is Boys Under 13 Downtown LVSC 01 Academy, Coach Kevin Argu, and I believe they are here. Why don't you come on down here, Coach, and bring whatever players came with you.
Your team, Coach, congratulations.
Thank you. Good job. The next is Girls Under 14, Heat FC 00 ECNL, Coach Amanda Schmutsen. I don't believe they are here. Is that correct? Okay, congratulations to them. Give them a nice round of applause. The Girls Under 16, Heat FC 98 ECNL, Coach Amanda Schmutsen. I do not believe they're here. Give them a nice round of applause. The Boys Under 16, LVS A 98 Red, Coach Ruben Duran. I do not believe they're here, but give them a nice round of applause. Girls Under 17, Downtown LVSC 97 Academy, Coach Eel Dehan. Come on down here. I think I got that right. Eel Dehan. Good job. All right. You got the whole team down here. Congratulations. Oh, they got their trophy. And finally, Girls Under 17, LP VSA 97 Red, Coach Rusty Brown, who I do not believe is here. Give them a nice round of applause. Again, 490 teams from around the world, and these are local kids, won their particular division. So congratulations, every single one of you. And I'd like to ask the president of the Downtown Soccer Club, our big partner in this, Roger Tabor, to come over here and say a couple words, and I believe he has a special recognition.
Oh, I do. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council, and first of all, we have to recognize the tournament director, who ends up doing all the heavy lifting and dirty work at the tournament, and Sherry Alexander. So Sherry, come on up here. And we have a special award, in addition to what we're doing here for the teams that won this great event. We have someone that every single year pulls off an incredible task and does such a great job that he's not always recognized. So we want to make sure we do it. We had 490 teams, some 1,600 games, okay? And each game has three referees. So do the math, we're 4,800 referee shifts that start at 7, start at 8:00 in the morning and play till 10:00 at night on 60 different fields in just 72 hours. And we have never not had three referees. And we sometimes take this for granted, but it's just an incredible monumental task. And I would like to recognize John Kennedy and his crew. Bob Singer's also here, so why don't you, you're both going. John? Yes?
This is John.
Right, I know. But John couldn't do without Bob, so.
This is for John Kennedy, the head referee. Bob, I didn't know you were going to be here, so we're going to get you one of these two later on, okay? So the mayor and the city council of the City of Las Vegas, thank you for your hard work, dedication, and commitment to the City of Las Vegas Mayor's Cup. We wish you continued success in all your future endeavors. Signed by the mayor, myself, and the entire city council. So congratulations.
First of all, I would like to thank Mayor Goodman and the councilmen for giving us this honor. It's not very often ordinary citizens like myself get a chance to serve the City of Las Vegas and the community, especially working with kids, and it's just been such a privilege over the years to work with the Downtown Club, man. First of all, I'd really like to recognize Roger, you know, the president of the Downtown Club. He did such a fantastic job attracting all these teams from all over the world, and his reputation and reputation in soccer in America is just incredible. Also like to recognize Sherry Alexander, the tournament director. I've been working with Sherry now for 27 years on projects in the city soccer, so it's always a pleasure to work with Sherry, and she's never more positive person to work with than Sherry Alexander. I'd also like to acknowledge Gary Sozman, the executive director of the Downtown Club, who works tirelessly to make sure the project goes well, and also the coaches of the Downtown Club headed up by Coach Danny Stone and Kevin, and all you guys know who you are, but we just want to, on behalf of the referees, I just want to say it's an honor and a privilege to represent Las Vegas and represent the city in such a fine tournament. Thank you, Councilman.
Okay. You got a little accent there. Okay, all right, good. Okay. Also want to recognize Lonnie Zimmerman. I don't know if Lonnie's here. Thank you, Lonnie. You do a great job that weekend, too. So thank you very much. Congratulations to the winners, and we'll be back in October.
Okay, you want to try to get, let's see if we can get a picture in here. Everybody squeeze in. This way. Poggers over there, come on.
Can get closer, little bro.
You good, Jennifer? All right, another round of applause.
You know, Councilman Ross is absolutely right. We need to thank the parents, too, because the parents are the ones that drive all these kids around and make sure they're at practice and motivating. So nice round for the parents over there and all the thousands of parents involved in this. Okay, we have two more recognitions, one from Councilman Beers and one from Councilman Ross, so I'm going to turn this over to Councilman Beers, and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. This is about the Science Bowl. The Science Bowl starts with a regional competition with teams from all over the Southwest. Thirty-two teams gathered this year, mostly from here in Nevada. Over 150 students practiced for months to prepare for this premier academic competition. Perhaps you remember the Varsity Bowl show that Channel 10 runs. This is similar, but with a science emphasis. The fast-paced format had team members buzzing in to answer tough questions, covering biology, chemistry, physics, mathematics, astronomy, plenty of more subjects, all at the beginning of last month. Matches continued throughout a full day until a champion was crowned. Lo and behold, the champion is here. Top 12 teams received cash prizes ranging from $5,000 down to $100 for their school's math and science department. In all, eight of the 12 prize-winning schools are from Las Vegas, two are from Anderson, and two are from Reno. Las Vegas schools garnered $9,900 for their respective schools, and the top three finishers get to continue on to the U.S. Department of Energy's annual National Science Bowl competition in Washington, DC, scheduled for the end of next month. Our Nevada delegation there will join 15,000 other high school students in order to qualify for the national finals. Councilman Ross and I are pleased to recognize the three winners from the City of Las Vegas who will be advancing to the national competition. From Ward Two, the first-place team is the Meadows School. If you will all please step up here. As impressive as this sounds, as a standalone achievement, it turns out that this is the school's second consecutive year winning the competition, and they went undefeated into the finals. If you'll allow me, I'd like to introduce the team members and their coach. If you would each raise your hand when I get to your name. Divya Ramakrishnan, Ramakrishnan, there we go. She is the captain of the team and a senior. We're going to lose her, at least for a little while, because she's been accepted at both Yale and Stanford. Math guru Daniel Chen. There he is. He's a junior, hoping to continue studying math and science in college. Audrey Chang is a junior, president of the Meadows School Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Club. That is an acronym shortened to STEM. Ryan Chackmac, a junior, already six foot two, in my estimation, a member of the school's STEM club, as well as the National Art Honor Society and the National Honor Society. Carolyn Lee, close. She's an alternate team member, a freshman, and the future of the Meadows School team. And the team's coach, 31 years teaching science, the last six at the Meadows School, Karen Blyfus. Karen Blyfus. Thank you all. If you'll remain standing, I'll get your certificates while Councilman Ross introduces our... Oh, we have the certificates. While Councilman Ross introduces our next winners.
Thank you, councilman. Thank you, students, for being here. And I challenge this community, I mean, we've got some very talented athletes, without a doubt, but we've got some very talented kids when it comes to scholastics and academics. This is just a sampling of this community, and I challenge this community to think that we don't have some top, top students in the Clark County School, just so we can certainly hear in Southern Nevada. The second-place winner was the Northwest Career and Technical Academy, and they took the second-place trophy and earned a twenty-five-hundred-dollar check for their science department. So as I call your names out and read a little bio of you, come on down here and stand next to us on my left side. The captain of the team, Kevin O'Neil. Come on down, Kevin. Kevin is a junior and is interested in engineering. Sam Black, come on down. Sam is a senior and would like to study genetics in college and receive a degree in evolutionary biology. Sam plans to attend Drake University in the fall. Next one is Jake Cray. Jake, head on down here. Jake is a junior and is interested in engineering. He would like to design theme park rides. I want your job. Okay, Riley Simpson. Where's Riley? Come on down here, young lady. Riley's a junior. She is interested in biology and would like to become a psychiatrist. Riley, I suggest you interview the Las Vegas City Council just for your prospective thesis when you win school. She would like to attend a college at USC or Columbia. Next is Dakota Jones. Dakota, come on down here, buddy. Dakota's a junior. And chemistry is his favorite branch of science. Dakota plans to attend BYU and major in biochemistry, chemical engineering, and biotechnology. Is that amazing? Amazing teams. Give these guys a round of applause. And I'll give your certificates out in a second. Okay, I can't forget their coach, David Gray. David, come on down. You're a critical part of this team. Give him a round of applause. Thanks, David. We'll get your certificates in a second. Now, third place, and Councilman Beers, we are so fortunate to recognize these talented kids in the city of Las Vegas. Centennial High School took third place in the Science Bowl. Is that not amazing? Two schools from the Northwest that... Give them a round of applause. And here we go. These bios are awesome, too. So here we go. Sean Johnson, come on down. Where are you, Sean? Sean is a senior captain of the thirteen-fourteen Centennial Science Bowl team. Sean has competed in Science Bowl and Science Olympiad for three consecutive years. Sean is a valedictorian candidate recipient of four perfect fives on the AP exams. Sean is a three-year member of Centennial's cross-country team and participated for one year in varsity quiz, assisting the team to a quarterfinal berth in this year's tournament. Sean plans to major in physics and minor in math upon returning from his mission. Next is Spencer Day. Spencer, where are you, buddy? Come on down here. Spencer is a senior and three-time participant in Science Bowl. In his junior year, Spencer captained his team to a ninth-place finish overall. Spencer has participated in Science Olympiad for two years, varsity cross-country for three years, varsity track for two years, having already helped his cross-country team to win two state championships and his track team to win one. Spencer will take one last track season this spring. In addition to his athletic accomplishments, Spencer is also a valedictorian candidate. Spencer received the Harvard Book Prize for his junior year and will learn in March whether he may be attending Harvard, Baylor, Ohio State, or some other excellent college where he'll prepare for a career in ophthalmology. Am I correct? All right, give him a round of applause again. Lindsay Madsen. Lindsay, come on down here. Lindsay is a senior and two-time member of the Science Bowl and Science Olympiad teams. Lindsay's a National Merit Scholar. Let me say that again. National Merit Scholar. I can't even spell that. Lindsay, she's a recipient of six perfect fives on the AP exams and also a valedictorian candidate. Lindsay is an accomplished pianist, teaching lessons and performing in her free time. Lindsay will make a decision this spring as to which university will be honored by her presence as she commences study in biology. Another round of applause for Lindsay. Next one is Connor Paul. Connor, come on down here, buddy. Connor is a junior, three-time member of the Science Bowl team. Connor is a two-time member of the Science Olympiad team, a three-year member of the Bulldogs lacrosse team, yay Bulldogs, and Centennial tennis team. He also is a candidate for valedictorian at that time. In the past, he's also won multiple robotics tournaments and translated this back into his Science Olympiad competitions. A round of applause for Connor. Sarah, are you ready? Sarah Gottfriedson, come on down here. Sarah is a junior and two-time member of the Science Bowl and Science Olympiad team. She's a three-year member of the band and varsity swim team. She's a candidate for valedictorian with a four-point-five GPA. Smile. I'm talking about you. GPA, she's competed in marching band competitions as well as solo and ensemble on piano. She plays flute and piano in her free time. She received fourth place in rocks and minerals in her freshman year in the Science Olympiad. Give her a round of applause. Now, I got to step back here and look. Wow. Impressive. Impressive. Look at these. These are our students. These are our kids. Now, this team couldn't do this, of course, without their coach, Andrew Douglas. Andrew, come on down and give him a round of applause, too. And of course, I would be remiss in not recognizing Trent Day. Trent, would you please come on down, too, and represent, stand by your students? And I know your boy's one of these kids, and Trent's a principal out there and does just a great job, great community partners. Again, this community, I want you to recognize not only our talented, skillful athletes, but also our talented, skillful academicians. Someone help me out here. Students, okay. We'll just round it up to students. But I got to say, I'm amazed, and I really got to take another look at this, because these are our kids, and I'm just so impressed with all of you. Thank you for coming down here, letting the Las Vegas City Council and the city of Las Vegas recognize you. And I want you guys to do one thing. Give your coaches applause and your parents applause for putting up with you for so long. Give them applause. Come on. And with that, I think we're all ready for a picture again. Mayor Protem, with your permission? I do all the heavy work around here. Squeeze in, you guys. Fall into the back. Well, you can do this. This isn't rocket science. That's a joke. Going live on Twitter. All right, another round of applause. Thanks, you guys. All right, last but certainly not least, and thank you, Mayor Protem. Thank you, students and school administrators. Sometimes, you know, I talked about athletes, I talked about great academics in our students, and sometimes teams are not recognized as they should. But whenever an outstanding team steps forward, and regardless of what discipline, I think it's incumbent that we recognize them as a city and a city council. So with that, I would also like to introduce the Centennial Boys Bowling Team. Centennial Hills, let's hear some noise. Team. This is Centennial's second consecutive state championship and third in the last four years. This season, Centennial posted their high game total and highest three-game total in school history. The team was led by the following four bowlers, and as I call your name, come on down and give them some noise. Quinn Hill. Come on down, Quinn. Quinn, this is Quinn's second year on the team and first state championship. Now, Quinn, you got to smile, okay? We're doing this because we love you, man. Second year on the team, first state championship. Quinn averaged a hundred and ninety-four during the playoffs at the Orleans. A hundred and ninety-four, awesome. Give him some love. Dylan Sisenti. Did I get that right, Dylan? Close enough. All right, come on down, Dylan. Dylan's in his fourth year on the team, third state championship. He earned his second varsity letter this season. Dylan is a captain of the bowling team and organizes the school's cheering section. Dylan averaged a one-hundred-and-eighty-two during the bowling season. Round of applause for Dylan. You rock, dude. Zach Campbell. Where's Zach? Come on down, Zach. Zach is in his second year on the team and earned his second state championship during the playoffs. Zach averaged a hundred and ninety-five. That's awesome, man. You rock. You rock, dude. Okay, stay right here. You're good. Antonio Hernandez. Come on down, Antonio. This is Antonio's third year on the team and second state championship. Antonio is the anchor of the bowling team. He averaged, ready, two-hundred-and-two during the playoffs. Amazing. Wow. Last but certainly not least is Garrett Page. Garrett, come on down. This is Garrett's fourth year on the team, third state championship. Garrett is the best bowler on the team, averaging, this is just terrible, I don't even want to say, Councilman Coffin, two-hundred-and-seventeen during the season. Garrett also had a high game and high three-game series for the team. Garrett also won the inaugural individual state championship, beating the top forty-eight bowlers in Clark County during the sixth-game tournament. And they couldn't do it also without their head coach, Greg Seiden. Greg, come on down. Come on down here. I'm going to ask Mr. Day. Trent Day, come on back down. We have got so many talented kids in this city and in Southern Nevada, it's important that we all recognize them. Who's the team captain? Captain, say a few words, buddy.
Talk about your team. Brag them up.
Okay, so my team is the most amazing team ever, awesomely. And Mr. Greg Seiden is a great coach. Mr. Garrett Page is an awesome co-captain. I'd like that he wants to say some words, too.
The bowling, for me, was like the highlight of my whole high school career, and these guys amplified it to the fullest extent. I mean, I don't remember telling my kids about it. It's just a great time. We all laughed. It was fun. But when it came down to it, we knew how to play. I mean, we don't like losing, so. And then I'd like to thank both my coaches, Mark and Greg Seiden, and my outside coach, Marty Hinton. He's not here, but he helped me through. I was like, since I was ten years old, begun this. So thank you very much.
Gather around the Mayor Protem there for a picture. Again, I'm doing the heavy work.
Okay, thank you very much, everyone. Now, we're going to take about a ten-minute break, and then we'll begin the city council meeting. Those are mine.
You don't want your speaking points, buddy?
All the certificates are still down there, but the other teams that weren't here.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
On the other side, Beverly, there's a little box that says Mike One.
Thank you.
That way you don't like what you take out.
And I know that I've tried to, you know, what I, to pick them out.
Is it, is it, is it there? I did want to talk to the guard and I have some more actually.
We are ready to convene this morning's city council meeting. This is our leader in staying green, Tom Perigo, that is now leaving us to go out We are recognized in our city for that, how well we're doing, and it's thanks to our city team and that gentleman. So, here we are. Public comment during this portion, we're on agenda item 10. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the The amount of time any single speakers allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. We'll set the time at one minute. We do have public comment later. I have a card here from Barbara Lawson and that's on agenda item 35. I have another card from Melanie Robison, also agenda item 35, and Roy Kiefer, also So if you'd like to come forward and make your opening comments, that's fine. If you prefer to wait, it's also fine. So, seeing nobody? Do you see anybody? Okay, I'll close the public comment and we'll move on to agenda item 11. Business item for possible action. Any items that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken, tabled, withdrawn, or held in advance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Councilman Anthony.
Thank you. Item number 40, bill number 2014-3, staff has asked this item be obeyed till March 19th, 2014. And item number 45, bill number 2014-14, staff has asked this be obeyed till April 2nd, 2014, and that will be my motion.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote and please post. That motion carries? Wait a minute.
Your honor, could I be marked as in favor of that motion, please?
I will. And Councilman Beers loves the voice rather than the quickings.
Do it again.
Okay. Failure of technology today, one. We will now revote on this item. Please go ahead and vote and then please post. You're welcome. Ah, it worked. Unanimous. Thank you very much, clerk. And so we will now move on to agenda item number 12. For possible action to prove the final minutes by reference of the regular city council meeting, February 5th, 2012, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. There's a motion. And please vote and please post. Carries as well. Thank you very much. Agenda items 13 through 33 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and recommended for approval by their department, may be enacted in one motion. Unless, oh, we've already done that, so that's fine.
Alright, thank you mayor. Before I make the motion, I want to make a correction for the record on two items. Item number 31-R4-2014 and item number 33-R6-2014. These resolutions need to be amended, so the date for the public hearing reflects April 2nd at 9:00 a.m. instead of 1:00 p.m. Thank you for those amendments. I will go ahead and make a motion to approve the consent agenda items 13 through 33.
With the amendments. With those amendments. And councilwoman?
I noticed that item, that item number 35 mentions for possible action to approve...
That's outside this group.
Yes, it's not pertaining to the alta group, right?
Well, this is not, we're just doing 13 through 33 only at this point.
I know, I'm talking about items number 31 and 33.
Oh, I thought you said 35. Okay.
Maybe I did. But in any case, first I would like to just see possibly if there's anybody here who had a comment on item number 31, which was the alta district improvement. It didn't go up at all this year, so I think we're okay, but I just wanted to take a check, second check. And then on 33, it only mentions the Fremont street maintenance, so I'm assuming that the alta is not included in that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. And Councilman Barlow, you want to bring something forward?
No, I was just letting you know that the councilwoman...
Oh, thank you. We communicate so well. Lovely. Alright, there's a motion. You made a motion. Please vote and please post. Thank you. Those motions carry. We'll move on to agenda item 34. This is in the administrative area. Report regarding an update on the Neon Museum from Bill Marion, Chairman, Board of Directors, Neon Museum. This is in reference to all wards. Looking forward to this. Good morning.
Thank you very much mayor. First of all, the good news is on...
Your name, nope, your name please.
Okay, thanks. The good news, I'm not here asking you for anything.
Your name first, please.
This is Bill Marion, 3455 Cliff Shadows Parkway.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman of the board of the Neon Museum.
Okay, thank you.
The good news is, we're not asking you for anything. I thought you'd like that. We're here today because, first of all, I've been chairman of the board, I think for about the past four years.
Not long enough.
Been involved with, you know, overseeing all of the construction and this may be my final act as chairman, I'm stepping down as chairman of the board. Rob McCoy will be taking my place. So, I'll still be on the board and you'll still see me on occasion. But I'm here because I want to give you a report. The city has been a partner with the Neon Museum ever since its inception. And I want you to know, one, how thankful we are for what you've done, and I want to give you a report on what your return of investment has been by being a partner with the Neon Museum. Turn this a little bit. So, first of all, thank you as the city council, and I want to thank some of you as individuals. Councilwoman Tarkanian, Councilman Barlow, you have been a member of the board at various times. Mayor Goodman and Councilman Coffin, with your work on the Las Vegas Centennial Commission, we have received wonderful support from you, which has allowed us to go forward. And then from the previous mayor Goodman, we certainly appreciate his support. And then of course, Councilman Ross and Councilman Beers. And every, and Councilman Anthony. The Neon Museum in 2005, when we acquired the ability to get the La Concha building that would serve as our visitor center, that really served as a turning point for the museum. We were able to rebuild it. It's an historic piece of architecture and that really laid the foundation for us to go out and fundraise in order to create a full-time operating museum. And I'm proud to announce that in October of 2012, we opened officially as a full-time museum. We opened to great accolades, I believe. And I can tell you that the, from that point on, and even before then, we have been operating in the black. From earned revenue, not from donations or contributions, but our operating expenses are fully covered by earned revenue, plus we have excess on top of that. So imagine a museum that is operating without needing donations in order to operate on a full-time basis. That's what your support has done. When we did the build-out on the La Concha and the build-out on the museum grounds, we finished with zero debt. So we are a debt-free entity as well, and for that, we have you to thank. So, we have expanded our offerings. We are doing educational programs. We did a program on the history of Paul Revere Williams. We've done programs on the stardust and the history of the stardust. We've done family programs where we've opened up the museum at night and we did an astronomy session with stars and the stardust in the Neon Museum boneyard. And those were free to the public and we're going to be doing lots more of those as well. We have initiated our night tours, which have been incredibly successful. And to give you a sense of where we are, we have nine full-time employees, 20 part-time employees for an FTE equivalent of about 20, plus we have 30 volunteers. Those are jobs that would not exist if we did not have the support of the Las Vegas City Council as a partner in this project. And then when you take into consideration that those jobs also create other jobs by a factor of .5, that really means that we've created probably 10 additional jobs in the downtown area. Our total revenue for fiscal, for, not fiscal year, but for a calendar year 2013, almost $2 million. $1 million from tour revenue, the rest from photo shoots, events. We've had 60,000 people last year go through our tour. I would imagine somewhere between 20 and 25,000 who did photo shoots and attended events. So we've had 85,000 visitors through the Neon Museum doors in this period of time. This is incredibly good news and we expect that to continue. We continue to see our tours sell out well in advance. The other interesting piece of news though, that you might find, is another value. And that is the value of earned media. Since we opened in, at full-time in October of 2012, we have had, we've been featured in the New York Times, the LA Times, the Today Show, USA Today. Associated Press has done both a video and a print story that went worldwide. Our total impressions for the past, let's say, 16 months is 2 billion 500 million impressions. That's 2 and 1/2 billion with a B. If you equated that into advertising dollars at about a dollar per thousand impressions, that's 2 and 1/2 million dollars in advertising that the city of Las Vegas has benefited from. Our visitors, they come from all over. They come, about 80% of them are non-resident. So we are attracting 80% of our visitorship from out of state. 25% are from out of country. So we are on the international scene as well, and it is international visitors who come to see us. Many of those are people who would not necessarily come downtown if we didn't exist or if the Mob Museum didn't exist. And so we are bringing people and money into the downtown area and helping be in part of that downtown revitalization. And we're doing it with earned income. Our Facebook page last year, we have, I mean, you can look at these numbers, we reached 450,000. Our website gets 29,000 visitors a month. 80% of them are new. They spend an average of about two minutes on the site. Again, that's advertising for the city of Las Vegas. Our future goals, we will be doing some additional fundraising because we would like to expand. We'd like to expand our collection. We'd also like to have continued growth in our educational programs. And so, you know, you'll be hearing a lot from us over the next few years. My parents taught me that when you get involved with a project, leave it better than you found it. And, not that the Neon Museum wasn't doing well before I was chair, but I think that we can say that it's definitely doing better and it's doing well, and it's something that I think that you can be proud of. I have a second part of my presentation, but at this point, we're able to answer any questions that you might have. I have Danielle Kelly, who is the executive director of the museum with me.
Well, we congratulate you, we're very proud. But I have to mention, back in the days of Jan Jones's mayorship, she was passionate about the lost value and what was happening around as we imploded everything in Las Vegas to save Neon Museums. And along with her friends Barbara Malaski and Robin Greenspan, put a real effort forward to save and treasure these neon sites. And as for the La Concha, of course, we all remember, those of us who are over 40, that the Domani brothers had that as a motel hotel on the strip next to the Riviera. And so how wonderful to preserve that beautiful conch shell, which is what it is upside down, I guess. But congratulations, we're really proud. We love to see our money well spent and see the strides that are made with people who are creative, inventive, and passionate about what they do. So I don't know if we have any comments, or we will go ahead and hear from Ms. Kelly first?
Well, actually what we want to do, and you sort of preempted, I was now just getting ready to say that we were going to thank a number of people who have been previous with city staff.
Go for it.
And Barbara Malaski and Jan Jones... that I think that you can be proud of. I have a second part of my presentation, but at this point, we're able to answer any questions that you might have. I have Danielle Kelly, who is the Executive Director of the Museum with me.
Well, we congratulate you, we're very proud, but I have to mention, back in the days of Jan Jones's mayorship, she was passionate about the lost value and what was happening around as we imploded everything in Las Vegas to save Neon Museums, and along with her friends Barbara Malaski and Robin Greenspan, put a real effort forward to save and treasure these neon signs. And as for the La Concha, of course, we all remember, those of us who are over forty, that the Domani brothers had that as a motel hotel on the strip next to the Riviera. And so how wonderful to preserve that beautiful conch shell, which is what it is upside down, I guess. But congratulations, we're really proud, we love to see our money well-spent and see the strides that are made with people who are creative, inventive, and passionate about what they do. So I don't know if we have any comments, or we will go ahead and hear from Ms. Kelly first?
Well, actually, what we want to do, and you sort of preempted, I was now just getting ready to say that we were going to thank a number of people who have been previous with city staff.
Go for it. Now they get a double whammy.
And Barbara Malaski and Jan Jones were top of that list, but some other people I, who I want to thank, who have been very much involved, Sam Tolman, Russell Coleman, Gina Venglass, Wes Hollum, Jeremy Levitt, Eric Singman, Courtney Mooney, Yorgo Kogafis, Esther Carter, Steve Ford, Terry Poncello, and John Riddella. I can't tell you how we would not have been able to do this without them, and I would also say, without the support of Betsy Fretwell, Scott Adams, and with David Riegelman and the PIO office. They have been remarkable to work with, and their passion is also great. But finally, there's one person that I want to single out, and that is Nancy Deener. Nancy Deener, who heads Culture and Leisure Affairs for the City of Las Vegas, has been on the Board for sixteen years. She resigned last year, but she has served as both Chairman and as President of the Board, and we would like to recognize her with what we might call a neon flame. And so Nancy, if you would come down and please receive this.
How nice, well-deserved.
Thank you. Thank you, thanks. Thank you, gosh.
So, do you want to say something?
Well, I just, this has been an incredible project, especially for those, many of us have been involved, because we grew up here, we're native Las Vegas, so it's like saving our heritage and our history. It's, it's one of the most wonderful museum projects I've had the privilege of working on, and it's in great shape, thanks to Bill and Danielle and many people's efforts, none, not the least of which is the city's efforts. We wouldn't have it without the city, so, thank you.
Great, wonderful.
Thank you very much.
Well, your sixteen years does go back beyond my three, I'm in three, Oscar did twelve, that's fifteen, so it hits right on Jan Jones in her mayorship, where she had the foresight to know that this was an art form to be treasured, so, really is exciting. Congratulations, we're really, really grateful. And Danielle, have a good time, I know you will.
Mayor.
Nancy, we're so proud. Yes, please.
I also want to just congratulate Nancy. I had the privilege of also being a part of the Neon Board at one point, and I believe I replaced Councilwoman Tarkanian when she came off, and you all are doing just an amazing job with everything that you're doing, from the fundraising to the exposure for the residents as well as the tourists in the downtown community. So, please keep up the good work and just know that we're really proud of all the accomplishments that you all have been able to, you know, put a feather in your cap in exposing the community at large to the wonderful work that you're doing from a historical preservation point moving forward, so, congratulations.
Yep, we are proud, and I will say, the beauty is, when you look back sixteen years, to see something come and succeed, much like the eighteen or twenty years that went into the planning and passion for the Smith Center, the Discovery Museum, all of these pieces that we're now being able to participate in and see the results of your efforts, so, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that whenever I hear Neon Museum now, I think back at its very beginnings, I think back when not that many people were interested in it, and I think back at all the hard work and a lot of the disappointments, a lot of the problems that came, and it takes passion and persistence in order to accomplish highly, and that's what you all had. You had that passion, you had that persistence, and you've come across with a great achievement, and we're all very proud of you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item Thirty-five. This is a report from Chief, Fire Chief William L. McDonald, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, ICMA review, and an update on the progress and present outcomes of the implemented recommendations. This is in reference to all wards. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the Council. I'm Willie McDonald, I'm the City's Fire Chief, and I'm very honored and happy to be here this morning. The purpose of my presentation is to provide the Council with an update of the progress that the Department has made on the ICMA study that was done here just a little while back. The report was presented to the Council about a year ago, but actually was published in two thousand and twelve. What I hope you have on your dais also is a copy of the executive summary that has all the recommendations that are listed, so that if there, a question comes up about one of the recommendations, you'd have an opportunity to refer back to the recommendation, I can speak to the, to the issue. In terms of the ICMA report, the, as I say, the study was initiated by the city as part of a citywide initiative to evaluate all the departments and ensure that we are providing excellent service from each department, began in two thousand and twelve, presented to the Council about a year ago, and the results were presented by the Fire Department at that time. Today's, the purpose of today's presentation is to provide you with an update on the major initiatives and recommendations from the report, and also provide some background on the Department's performance and the outcomes that we have had. Background on the Department, our operating budget's about a hundred and twelve million dollars, we have six hundred and seventy employees, nineteen fire stations, as you know, we have one fire station under construction out on Bonanza and about Page. We have our own fire alarm office, and I think that's an important point to point out. Our folks begin the process of providing services from the very beginning that somebody needs the help. They call us, our dispatchers provide pre-host, pre-care, pre-arrival instructions and information for folks to make sure that the care starts right as, as soon as the caller reaches our center, and so they're a very important part of our system. And then they're also a part of the team that's out there in the field, because our firefighters rely on them to make sure that things are happening behind the scenes to help improve the outcomes of the service. We have an incident volume of about a hundred thousand, and I wanted to just provide some context in that, as you know, I was a Fire Chief in the tenth-largest city in the country and, before coming here, that's San Jose, there's a million, million people in that city. We had more resources in San Jose, we had thirty-three fire stations and more firefighters on duty, yet we ran fewer calls for service in a year, about seventy-five thousand there and a hundred thousand a year, so, very high-performing, very dedicated firefighters, very hard-working individuals providing service to this community. We did have seven fire fatalities last year, it's a number that's much higher than we would want it to be, but it's something that we strive to keep very, very low, and our property loss for the entire city, if you added up all the property that was lost, was ten point seven million dollars. And so, in terms of the Department, the services that we provide, we are a full-service Department, we provide services that many other agencies don't provide here in the Valley or in the country. Besides responding to hostile fires, we also provide fire code adoption, maintenance, and interpretation of the code, plan review, new construction, tenant improvement inspections, fire safety maintenance inspections to make sure buildings are maintained in a very safe way. We have the only technical rescue team in southern Nevada, we have the only hazardous materials team southern Nevada, and we have the only FBI-qualified bomb squad. We also have made an effort to increase the ability that we have, or increase the partnerships that we have with our community, with all of our employees. We encourage our employees to contribute to our community, invest in our community through volunteering, and they've all taken, taken advantage of that and have engaged. This is a copy of a survey that was completed recently, you've all seen this before, but it's very important for me to point out, because I just think it's representative of the kind of hard work and the dedication that Las Vegas Fire and Rescue firefighters demonstrate on a day-in and day-out basis. This survey was recently published, it identifies the level of satisfaction that our residents have with the services provided by Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. As you can see, every ward, every area, every community in the city has rated the Department as high, very satisfied with the services that are provided. In addition to the ISO rating of one, in addition to our accreditation, our outcomes speak for themselves, and we have, on a year-in and year-out, we have a, outcomes to emergencies that we respond to that are consistently higher than what you would see in almost any community in the country. We have a confinement success rate, which means our ability to confine fires in the room of origin is among the highest in the country, it's eighty percent of the time. And as you know, sometimes fires aren't reported right away, and so for us to be able to contain fires within the room of origin eighty percent of the time is almost amazing feat. While the number of fire fatalities is higher than we would strive for, and in fact, it's something that we work on and think about day-in and day-out, we are among the lowest in U.S. major cities. Our recorded resuscitation outcomes are the highest seen in the country. We have computer-aided dispatch, pre-arrival instructions that are provided to our community on a very high level, sixty percent of the time those are provided. Our witness V-Fib and V-Tac cardiac resuscitation rates are forty-four percent, and those folks are all walking out of the hospital. And our, we have a twelve-point-four percent survival rate for all reads, all types of cardiac arrest, and again, that's the highest in the country. That rivals Seattle/Washington, which has a significant amount of folks who have bystander, who provide bystander CPR, so, we're very proud of that ability. We also have a world-class heavy rescue team, we have excellent hazardous materials team, and Las Vegas Fire and Rescue has a history of dedicating ourselves to providing the highest level of fire and emergency response services in the country, and continually looking for and implementing improvements in our service, delivery methods for the citizens of the City of Las Vegas. I also brought along with me, I had.
Excuse me, Councilman Barlow, I'd like to ask a question or make a comment, please.
Mayor, Chief, if you don't mind, Mayor, do, do we ask questions as we move through the presentation, or do, would you like for us to wait until you're done with the presentation?
I prefer if you would ask as we went along.
Okay, well, great. Looking at, looking at this slide in particular, you, the question, this comes from the ICMA study, correct?
No, this is, this survey is a survey that we saw last week at the strategic planning process, so this was done by.
Say it again.
This is the survey that was completed that we saw last week at the Strategic Planning Day. The survey was done by the company that surveyed, I think, about one-point-eight million residents across the country over here.
So this is a neutral, this was a neutral party that hosted the survey?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Today, there's a shared agreement between AMR and the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, correct?
There, there is a franchise agreement, yes.
Franchise agreement for technical purposes, a franchise agreement.
Yes.
Right. So, when I look at the very satisfied and the satisfied, when residents check off that box of however they structured the survey, residents, in my opinion, are looking at it from the standpoint of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue and AMR showing up to a resident, combined services in order for them to be satisfied versus just Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, correct?
I, I think that in some cases that it's, it's considered that way, but I think that this in particular shows just fire service protection, fire protection services in the city, so this is only dealing with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue.
But when a call comes out, traditionally, from what I've seen on, in, time and time again, AMR and Las Vegas and Fire, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue shows up to a call.
To medical aid calls.
I'm sorry?
To medical aid calls.
Medical aid.
Okay, so how is, so how is this survey broken out in relation to the various calls?
This is a rating.
So that we can help identify whether or not the very satisfied and the satisfied are coming from what type of calls?
There's a separate slide like this, it's not as, it's, it's not exactly like this, but there's a separate slide on emergency medical services also in that survey.
If I might interrupt you.
Will it be a part of your, will it be a part of your PowerPoint today?
I did not bring that slide, no, sir.
Councilman Beers had an answer to your question, I believe. Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. To my colleague way the heck down there to my left.
Councilman Barlow.
That's from page, this graph is from page A three in the Appendix A of the binder we got last week at the strategic meeting, and also on that same page is a separate question about emergency medical services. It shows a few more people satisfied instead of very satisfied, but everyone is satisfied or very satisfied specifically with our EMS, according to the companion map to this that isolated EMS, and I've got it here if you want to take a look at it.
Right. But the question that I have as it relates to EMS, when calls, when calls go out, there's two agencies that show up to that call.
That's correct, sir.
Right?
For, for the most part.
AMR, from a franchise agreement standpoint, and Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, correct?
That's correct, except for traffic accidents.
So, being that you, you have that information in front of you, Councilman, how does the question read as it relates to how a resident will look at that? Because the way you're presenting it is as though it's, they're speaking specifically only to the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, however, a resident can be looking at it from the standpoint of, I had a number of agencies show up to my emergency, so therefore, I am very satisfied, I am very satisfied, or I am satisfied with the response that I received to my emergency call.
You are correct, Councilmember, that's why I didn't use that slide, that's why I used the slide where they rated the Department.
Madam Mayor, if I just might.
Please.
This is just fire services, the other one that Councilman Beers mentioned is medical services, so you would not need to consider that in this, this is just fire services. It's not medical services, and that's where the EMS is involved. So it's, do you under, no, you don't look at, well, that, am I, am I quoting you correctly, Mr. Beers?
Yes, and that's exactly what the Fire Chief said, yes, please.
My understanding of the methodology is that residents who agree to participate in this mail survey were provided with a list of city services, and they were asked to rank them between not satisfied, or very dissatisfied, dissatisfied, neutral, satisfied, and very satisfied. They just went down the list and ranked them, and then, as it ends up, they love our fire service, they love our EMS service, citizens love our sewer service.
Right.
Our sewer service, city.
And get increasingly satisfied as we go down the list, there's actually a series of maps prepared that shade the city's geography in accordance with people's ranking on that scale on average within a neighborhood, and, for example, people are generally not satisfied with the quality of public schools in Las Vegas.
Right.
They're generally not satisfied.
Councilman, the point, the point that I'm making, or at least I'm attempting to make, is the average citizen has no clue in relation to a franchise agreement.
Right.
When the average citizen dials nine-one-one.
Right.
They want someone to come and assist them for whatever that need may be.
Absolutely.
So, whether it's the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, or AMR, and I don't know what percentage of the time you show up collectively, and I'm pretty sure you may have that data as well, so to me, when I receive that survey as a layperson, and I'm asked, how do I rank, you know, the fire services, do I really understand the separation of the two? Because all I know is that when I call, people showed, whether.
Right.
One truck had AMR, or another truck had Las Vegas Fire and Rescue.
Yes, sir.
All I know is that my immediate need was addressed. So therefore, how do you split the two to basically say, well, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue did okay, and AMR did okay? To basically separate the two in relation to the survey?
We, we have a second instrument that we use in the Department, and that's what I brought here in this bag, is we send out follow-up cards to our folks. We just started this process just a few weeks ago, and we send cards to people that we respond to on medical aid calls, and we ask them specifically about the service of Las Vegas Fire and Rescue, and we have the, mail these cards back if they would like to do that, or they can keep them, but we have a very high return rate, and there are specific comments, almost every one of them speaks directly to Las Vegas Fire and Rescue. So that's a second tool that we use to evaluate our service. Now, it's anonymous, but we have a mark, so if we find something on these cards that causes us to be concerned, then we can follow up and find out if there's some additional information that's needed from that person.
Final question, follow-up. Would you be surprised if, in fact, you sent out a survey asking if AMR and Las Vegas and Fire Rescue were separate or under the same Department? Would you be surprised with the answer to that question?
I'm not sure what I think, I'm not sure if I know what the answer would be, so, I guess, yeah, I guess I would be surprised.
How long has we, have we had the franchise agreement with AMR?
The current one is ten years.
Ten years.
But there was one before that, I believe.
But there was one before that, right?
Yes.
Can someone help me with that, Betsy? Someone in your department? How long?
My understanding is this has been going on, we've had an existing relationship for nearly thirty years with AMR.
Okay, so, I have a guess as to what the answer will be, that the public believes through their own reality of perception, that AMR and the Las Vegas Fire and Rescue is no different when responding to a survey. And so, I'm not trying to pick apart, well, I guess I am trying to pick apart your survey in relation to the possibility of it being skewed in the way in which the questions were asked.
Councilman, may I just weigh in really quickly? Because the survey data that the chief is using is the one that we do every year and bring back to you, so you, you can gauge priorities, how we're doing in our priority implementation, general citizen satisfaction. You, unfortunately, you were, had to deal with a family issue. Unfortunately, you had to deal with a family issue during our retreat, so you didn't get the benefit of the overall presentation. I don't want the public to think that this survey was done as it relates to the ICMA study, because it wasn't. It was done as a part of our annual surveying process and a statistically valid method to cover the whole assortment of services that the city provides, as well as your stated priorities and how we're doing in that. So this wasn't a specific survey to validate whether or not Las Vegas Fire and Rescue or AMR are doing a good job, whether they're branded the same or differently. That was not the intent of this survey. And I think where the chief is in his presentation is kind of an overview of generally where we are as a fire department. So, you know, this slide is obviously about fire, which is what you guys have been discussing. There are other data that you can look at in that survey, and I'd be happy to, you know, visit with you after the meeting's over to show all of those service areas of the city and how we're performing, because not every map is like this. We actually did really, really well. We scored 20 points better than all of our peer cities in this survey on customer satisfaction for what the city is doing for the citizens, which is just awesome, right? So, you know, a lot of the maps are blue, which is great. There are some other maps and code enforcement and building, pardon me, and job and economic development that weren't as blue as this. There were some kind of orange and yellow layers. So my point is it's, this survey tool wasn't necessarily designed for that purpose, so I just didn't want it to be confused with the ICMA update report. This is more a part of the presentation about the overview of where the fire department is today. And then the chief's going to go into the recommendations and where we are on that, which would speak more specifically to EMS, as well as interlocal agreements, how we did on our administrative changes in personnel, and all those other things that were covered in the 23 ICMA recommendations. So I don't know if that helps frame it up a little bit, but I thought it might be helpful to move the dialogue.
It's helpful, but by no means am I asking these questions to basically say that the residents don't believe that our fire services, whether it be the franchise agreement with our partner or our Las Vegas and Fire Rescue, aren't doing a great job, because you all are doing a great job.
Thank you, sir.
Okay? And I know that. I see that each and every day when, whether it be both agencies showing up to one specific location or individually. I mean, I see it all over the community, each and every day, and residents are very pleased with the way in which you all, men and women, get your job done on behalf of the community from a public safety standpoint. But just looking at how the depiction of the survey is the only point that I was looking at in relation to how the perception of the two agencies, in my opinion, basically falls under one category versus just Las Vegas Fire and Rescue taking 100% of the credit.
Yes, sir.
Madam Mayor, if I just might, could, just for my own education, could I ask a couple of questions? If you have a fire-
Yes.
Not an accident or something else, but if you have a fire, this AMR, do they go out as well as the fire department go out to the fire?
We just dispatched Las Vegas units on that. I was thinking that perhaps they might be a standby.
It's just, that's what I thought. So anything that's a fire, where fire services are needed, it's just the fire people that go out. And it's just your ambulance, your medical people that go out. And that's what I was trying to say before, there's a difference between what's happening that's a fire service where there's an actual fire and the other. And I also would like to add that I do have citizens in my ward that, not on my questioning, but on their giving information to me, who have noticed a difference in the service between what's provided by our firefighters and what's provided by the others. So I would want to make that difference. I don't know if there's a big difference in people between Ward 1 and 5, but they've come forward, particularly seniors have come forward to me and voiced some concerns at times.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please continue.
Okay. So now to the report. The report was operational and financial in terms of its review. It identified 23 recommendations and eight priorities, and also identified several best practices that were identified that Las Vegas Fire and Rescue had achieved. Our approach to evaluating the report, to looking at the report, was to, you know, it was a point in time, and so when I got here, I wanted to go through and make sure all the information was up to date, because some progress had been made on some of the recommendations by the time that I had got here. So I went back and verified and evaluated the findings. I took, we took the opportunity to sit down with every chief officer and every manager in the department and go through a series of questions and try to gain a little more information about the organization, about the position of the department, and where we were as an organization. Met with several of our firefighters, went out to the stations and met with them to get their perspective on the organization. I called the rescue, I mean, the researchers directly and spent quite a bit of time on the phone with them after I got here, because there were some parts of the report I really wanted to understand a little better. So I called them and spent quite a bit of time with follow-up. I've met with some of you and city staff as well, and actually had the opportunity to sit down with the Chamber of Commerce and Nevada Taxpayers Association to go through the information. So now on to the recommendations. And I tried to break these up, because there's a lot of interrelationships between some of the recommendations, so I tried to group them into three categories, both because of that relationship and because of the ease of the presentation. And I grouped them into three things: people, things that have an impact on staffing or things like that, service delivery, and then administrative. And so what you see here on this slide is the various recommendations briefly identified, and then next to them is a number that relates to the recommendation number that we have on the executive summary that I provided to you. So in that first case, in terms of vacancies, recommendation 3 and 14 both spoke to that. There was a lot of concern about the number of vacancies that we had on the department, so I'll just give you some background on how we're doing on that. We hired six firefighter paramedics back a few months ago. Those folks are now out in the field. We had hired 40 in January to start to fill up some of the vacancies. I might just mention to you the hard work that our firefighters are committing to the organization right now. We have a lot of vacancies, and we've had to pull some folks off the line, and we have a lot of folks that are working additional days so that they can support these folks that are in the academy. But at one time, we thought we were going to be completely full. We've had a few retirements in the meantime, but we essentially addressed this issue by filling up as many of the positions as we possibly could, and those folks should be out of the recruit academy in June and fill in a lot of the vacancies that we had formerly had. I might mention to you also that the staff, the executive staff, was pretty small when I got here, and they were very dedicated, very hardworking, and doing a lot of great things, but they were very tired. And so we tried to do a lot to increase the administrative capacity of the organization by filling in some positions that had been left previously vacant. In terms of administrative services, one of the recommendations was is that the administrative service functions were buried essentially in our Fire Prevention Bureau. I agree with that, and it really was bogging down our ability to provide great service to the folks who come in and want to make some modifications to building or build things. So we're moving that back out. That's one of the recommendations that we made in this year's budgets middle, so we'll move the Administrative Bureau back out. We'll reorganize, and so that those functions, whether it be budget or payroll or HR services, were moved out of the Fire Prevention Bureau and into a bureau that's separate, so that they'll receive the focus that they need, and the Fire Prevention folks can receive the service, provide the services they should as well. Relieve personnel and leave essentially the same as the first one, but because we had so many vacancies and we didn't have relieved personnel to fill those vacancies, we had a lot of overtime. Through the collective bargaining agreement that you all just recently approved, we've corrected a lot of that, and so we have more relieved personnel that have been added to the department. So we will see a significant decrease in the amount of overtime starting in July. We have been looking at staffing options and alternatives, and we're looking at that right now. We're looking at two different things: different shift schedules, and we're also looking at peak shift schedules so that we could add people just when we need them, and we can make sure that we're not overworking our folks by using different shift schedules that would allow for us to make sure that we're consistently focused on the wellness of those folks as they work through their shifts. And in terms of new positions, there were recommendations that we needed to add, a Quality Assurance Director. We have filled that spot. You all have met her in the past. She is the person who brought to you the partnership that we have with UNLV. So that position is filled, and she's doing great things for the department. We're currently recruiting a Quality Improvement Officer for our Fire Alarm Office, and we also have some other recruitments in process. I also want to talk just quickly about the Fire Prevention Bureau. There had been some concern about the amount of turnover time that we had there, so we've added some positions, including a Plan Review Technician that has really sped up our ability to do over-the-counter kinds of reviews. And so we are quickly now being able to turn around plan reviews and increase the level of service we provide to our community. In terms of service delivery, one of the major areas was, and in fact, it took up two recommendations, was how we provide prehospital care services. We were recommended by the ICMA study to take a larger role in prehospital care. That's something that we saw as a recommendation, and that's something that we have implemented in our department. We have worked with AMR on a routine basis. I've met with AMR probably since I've been here, and the meetings were going on prior to my time, so that we could ensure that we had a lot of coordination collaboration along with AMR. We have approved a CAD to CAD link, and what that would do for us is that would provide the ability for both agencies to see all the resources that are out there, so that we could ensure that there's true integration between the resources of ours and theirs. And I think that that's the best option that we could have going forward. We've approved that twice. It hasn't happened yet. We're still waiting for that to happen, and that's something that AMR, I think, will be considering. We were asked to clearly define when Las Vegas Fire and Rescue will be transporting, and we've done that. We were asked to reduce inefficiency. We have identified that sending two ambulances when you only need one is a very inefficient way to provide services, and there are limited resources. We really don't believe that we can provide that level of service, and we shouldn't provide that level of service, so we've reduced that beginning on Monday of this week. There was a question about auto aid imbalance. That's also in the report. And so we have been working with our neighbors. We've changed on some of the auto aid requirements that we have. We don't, we no longer respond to alpha calls across boundaries, and so we just allow the folks within their own jurisdiction to take those calls. And we also are looking at removing rescues from auto aid medical calls, so that we just serve our own area, so that we can keep those folks in our own communities. And I just, yes?
Mayor, through you. Excuse me, yes, please, Councilman.
Chief, just for the sake, a lot of us know a lot of the call letters and terms that you're using.
I'm sorry.
But for the sake of those that are listening and viewing on television and the internet, just real briefly explain the alpha calls, so that everyone can follow you accordingly.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, so we categorize our medical calls into four categories: the least serious, and in fact, they're not emergencies in many cases, are alpha calls. That's the lowest priority medical calls that we have. So our priority medical dispatch allows for us, through the series of questions that we ask a caller, to be able to determine that the call is an alpha call, and we can send the appropriate number of rescuers to that call. We actually have a reduced response time or a longer response time that's provided for that. So in the case between ourselves, North Las Vegas and County, Clark County Fire, we've agreed that those calls should be handled by the host jurisdiction, wherever that call occurs, and so we don't unnecessarily utilize resources from another agency to provide level to the lower level call. Bravo calls are the next highest level, Charlies are more serious, and Deltas are considered life-threatening. And I think the other thing I may have said was auto aid. And auto aid is where you send the closest company to a call that's facilitated by the fact that we have the dispatch center that dispatches all of the fire resources for ourselves, North Las Vegas and Clark County. So that allows for us to know where all of the units are, and it also allows for us to be able to dispatch those folks. It really adds to the ability for us to send the closest company to the call, no matter whose jurisdiction it is. And so we do that, and we've been doing that here for years and years and years and years, and it allows for us to get the closest company, reduce response time, but it also creates an ability for us to limit large gaps of, large gaps in our units, our resources in terms of service delivery. If we send just Las Vegas units to a call that might be near one of our borders or our fringe areas, and there's closer companies elsewhere, we make large service gaps in our areas, so what happens is the response time in subsequent calls would be longer.
And if I might, Chief, if I could ask, since we do have the viewing public, the 911 call that is made, or the 311 call, those go into Metro and they dispatch then to fire?
Yes.
On both?
Yes.
911, if you have an emergency.
311 comes into us directly, doesn't it? 311 comes to us directly.
It comes to you directly.
Yeah.
And so from the 911 call, the determination is made at what level you will dispatch?
That's correct.
From what you said, alpha and bravo, delta, and I missed somebody in there.
Charlie.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Right, okay. I also, I did mention that the service delivery questions that were also in the ICMA report related to agreements that we have with neighboring agencies, we're working on auto aid agreements that we had that had been originally adopted back in the late '70s, early '80s. We're looking at those right now, and that was an example of one of the changes that we're considering making. There have been significant changes in resource levels amongst the three agencies that are involved in those auto aid agreements. North Las Vegas, as you know, almost never staffs any of their rescues, and so that's really created a change in the relationship that we have between ourselves and them. So that's one of the main reasons that we're considering removing rescues from the auto aid system when it relates to medical aid calls and just serving our own community as opposed to sending them out of the community. And we have some unincorporated islands, as you know, in our community, so we're looking at those right now in terms of how we provide service and what charges should be levied. In addition to that, as I mentioned, we have the only hazmat team in the county, we have the only bomb squad in the county, we have the only technical rescue team, and so we're working on MOUs with our neighbors in terms of making sure that we can get some reimbursement from them on those areas. In terms of the number of emergency resources that we have here in the city of Las Vegas, we have every single day 160 firefighters on duty. We have 19 ALS engines. All of these folks provide prehospital care, and they all advance life support. We have a technical rescue unit, we have a sea burn unit, we have two trucks that are advanced life support, we have 22 staffed ambulances, as you know, we have an ALS field supervisor, and the alarm office and the battalion chiefs are an integral part of our prehospital care system. I think it's really important to point that out. Our battalion chiefs are required to and responsible for ensuring that the city is fully covered at all times, so no matter what's going on in the city, we want to make sure that the resources that we have available are in places where it would provide for excellent response time or the best response time we can for the subsequent calls that may occur. I think what I can also share with you is that Las Vegas Fire and Rescue is really set up for the Affordable Care Act and to provide services into the future. We have the regional deployment, as I mentioned, so we can make sure that we can provide services as quickly as possible. We have the regional communication center, and that really is the key to affordable care. That's the way in. That's how we find out who needs the service, and that's how we can make sure that we're sending the right member of the department to those calls. We have the strategic placement of resources, and the reason that fire and EMS has become a marriage is because back in the day when fire stations were located the way that they were, we placed them so that we could get to fires very quickly, before the room and contents fires turned into larger fires and before flashover occurred. And because of that, we determined back in the '70s that if you just added a little equipment and some training to the folks that were on those units, you could provide a very high level of service that would be able to be served, would be able to serve the community. And so we have had that in this community for a very long time. And as I say, we have 22 units, and we have very stable, very dedicated employees that are really looking to provide a higher level of service. It has been our history in Las Vegas. Las Vegas Fire and Rescue has continually looked for better ways to serve the community, ways to enhance our services, and ways to provide better services to our community. So that's just a part-
Chief, if I might make a suggestion or ask, do you have it? All of us usually, when it's air conditioning time, turn, close our windows and our air condition, frequently with the music on or whatever, don't hear the sirens. Do we own the technology to do four-way flashing at lights?
We have-
So that every, do we have that technology and that application?
We have traffic preemption for our fire apparatus to make it safer for when we travel through intersections. Our folks always are very aware of the environment when they enter an intersection, whether it's green or not, we want to make sure that they're really paying attention. But we can improve the speed at which we respond by through traffic preemption.
Well, what I'm wondering is, can we purchase, sorry, the technology so that as the fire equipment or EMS is going forward for the city, that we have the equipment to make four-way flashing? So if in fact you're out there in your car, your truck, and you're driving along, and you've got the music going and your windows are closed, and you don't hear, can those lights all four-way flash all the way around, which would be visual? It's just technology.
I don't know the answer to that one.
We have, we actually did a report for Council, I imagine it might have been last summer. I'll pull it out for you, Mayor, and then maybe in the briefings next week, we can talk about some of the, what we're doing now, who has that preemption ability? about some of the, what we're doing now, who has that preemption ability, why they have it, and then we can talk about the impacts of expanding that.
Okay. I think it would be a great purchase for technology for fire.
We have it on all of our fire, all of our fire equipment has the ability to control those lights.
Right. They don't use it though, correct?
They, they actually do use it.
I've never in 50 years in this town ever had a four-way flash.
I have personally experienced it last week.
Oh, bravo. Anyway, just a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, it may be that depending on the call type, they may not be at that level of response where they're required to get their, I don't know what the circumstance may have been in that situation. So the situation you experienced may have been different than the one I experienced, but the bottom line is that to best my knowledge, all of our vehicles are equipped with that preemption technology. And in fact, Councilman Beers was the one who asked for that report, was it about a year ago maybe? Yeah, I'll, I'll dig it out for you and can kind of explain who has it, why, and we can discuss if we need to do something more different.
Okay, because I just think it would really be helpful for those of us who are driving all the time.
Okay.
And Councilman Beers.
Aren't you speaking about having that device turn the lights flashing four ways? I think instead, those devices, don't they turn the light green in the direction of travel of the fire truck?
And red everywhere else.
And red the opposite direction. So it doesn't work the way you're suggesting, mayor. Instead of making all directions go on a stop sign basis, it turns red lights green and green lights red.
Well, again, you know, having gone with that, that I see as a problem for any emergency because again, with the windows closed, your radio on and you've got them behind you, you don't see them and you just see green, so off you keep going. And that's why I am absolutely, I didn't say it clearly, it needs to flash which says everybody that's come in any direction, there's an emergency, there will be a vehicle coming. And I just think it would be a very good investment because I've seen people just keep driving right along, they're just absolutely oblivious to the emergency vehicles that are coming on and they're life-saving.
And mayor, you're talking about then, not that the red light goes around, but it's just red flashing in four.
On all four sides.
Five, four of her sides, yeah. I've never seen it, is that what you saw?
Well, I was under the impression that that was what was going on, but I, I think we probably need, I'm not sure we wanted to discuss this in depth here, but, but I think part of what's going on is trying to keep the traffic flowing so the equipment can actually get through the traffic versus it being in a logjam with everybody stopped going one at a time. But I think that's why it's probably better to pull out that report and maybe have a separate briefing on how we use those traffic management systems and I'd really prefer that Jorge be a part of that conversation and maybe our traffic engineering section because that's a pretty critical piece of the puzzle. How do we, the goal is to try and get that life-saving personnel and equipment as quickly and as safely as we can to the destination in enough time to make a difference. So whether it's fire apparatus or EMS apparatus and simultaneously not, you know, create a traffic problem that creates another accident that requires a response. So it's a delicate balance.
Okay. In the area of administration, I'll go through these quickly. It recommended that we update our strategic plan, we're in the process of doing that now and we followed it and we submitted our budget for the late as it represents what's in the strategic plan. Cooperation and coordination with AMR. We have been meeting with AMR, but admittedly I'll tell you that I think we can do better in terms of collaborating. I think that we have been meeting, but I think really in terms of building a better system, I think there's great opportunity here. I think that there's an opportunity where, given the goals that we have as an organization and department, that we can find the best utilization of resources available with more collaboration and coordination. We have committed to continue to work with AMR as well as others to try to find that, that solution and that level of integration because I believe there will always be a place for private provider in this city, but I think that there's, I think we can do better in terms of our coordination. We are focused on succession planning. We have been providing some classes, but we don't have a complete program so we see it as a critical part of our, our future so that is something that we're considering. We're looking at a different way to do hydrant repair, public education, we're actually using as many of our folks, both on duty and on volunteer way to try, try to bolster our ability to connect more with our community. And we are looking at a fee study to make sure that we're charging enough for the services provided by our Fire Prevention Bureau to make sure that we have the adequate staffing in it to improve the turnaround time. We haven't raised fees in over 10 years. In terms of continued improvement, this is our history, this is what Las Vegas Fire and Rescue does. We have an accreditation report that we just submitted. I know I'm going a little bit long, but I, I have to tell you that in terms of the accreditation submittal that we just provided, we got a call from the commission and they were raving about the report that we had just submitted and the quality of the work and the quality of the improvements that had been made over the one-year period since the last time we had been evaluated. And they made it a point to call us and let us know that so that we could be someone that could be contacted by other fire departments that would be interested in that.
That's good.
As I did mention, our strategic plan, we are currently going through an ISO grading. Right now, we are a class one, we've been a class one for a long time. I think that's really important and I hope that we can continue to be a class one. We have significant employee engagement that's going on. If we just get out of our folks way, they do great things and so that's what we're trying to do. We continue to look for opportunities to improve not only ourselves, but also with our neighbors. We look for efficiencies and regional partnerships. And I might mention that we've been engaged in a, a new program where we're looking for providers out in the community that we can partner with so that we can provide better services to our community. I brought one to you a little while ago, partnership that we have with UNLV School of Social Work that helps connect people who don't have acute illnesses or acute injuries but have some need for some services and we try to connect those folks with the proper agencies. We have now been working with Catholic Charities, we spend a lot of time now with the Rescue Mission and in fact, we had a private conversation with the new director of Medicaid to see if there's some opportunity for us to provide some non-emergency services to folks where they live, like at Catholic Charities, so that we can reduce the amount of times that they call for emergency services and they can get their needs taken care of right there. In terms of our transport plan, we did make a transition at the beginning of this week and I just wanted to share a little bit of background with you on that. We believe our transport changes that we had just made to transport about 50% of the patients that go to an emergency room is very conservative and it's got lots of built-in controls to make sure that we can manage that and really understand how it's impacting or not impacting our system. We felt that we had available capacity to be able to increase to that level. It does maximize limited resources and I know that there's been a lot of concern in the community recently about long hospital wait times, which in my mind means that we really can't be wasting limited resources and so we believe sending the right number to calls is the right thing for us to do. We have very highly trained, very dedicated skilled paramedics and they respond to every call and always have and they'll always continue to do that. We, our, our plan at this point, and we know that we'll be able to do this, that's why we picked 50%, we didn't jump in further. It provides the ability for us to ensure that we maintain the readiness of our fire and rescue deployment system and so that was critically important to us. And we used a method of planning, then implementing, then monitoring and controlling and that's how we're using this plan and we, we've been reviewing it every single day, we're really closely watching it. We think that some improvements will be made over time as we go forward, but we really feel really positive about this plan. So that's, that's something that we'll be probably reporting back to you on a routine basis so that you know how things are going. And again, I'm going to just say in closing that everything that I've talked about today, I've had some comments come from different people who've talked about the amount of progress that has been made on this study over the short period of time, but really it's, it's been the history here for the organization to really look at itself on a routine daily basis and find ways to try to improve not only how we serve the community, but the services that we provide. And so I'm proud to stand here and tell you that, look forward to any questions you may have and that's the end of the report.
Thank you, that was a great report. We're so proud of Fire and Rescue. We did have some cards and I'm going to take the prerogative here of letting them make brief comments. We have three, so it's just for these three. Melanie Robison or Robison, if you will come up, please. And then I'm going to be calling on Barbara Larson and then Roy Kiefer. Thank you. And we will set the clock at two minutes, if you would, please.
All right, thank you, mayor, and thank you council members, thank you for allowing me to talk. I, I did prepare a little statement, but when I timed it, it was three minutes, so I'm going to kind of shorten it down for you. First of all, just in the interest of full disclosure, I'd like to let you guys know that my husband is a member of the fire department, a different fire department. My father-in-law is retired from the Las Vegas Fire Department and I have been working as a private ambulance paramedic for almost 18 years. So I don't tell that, tell you that for any other reason than to just let you know that I believe that gives me kind of a relatively unique perspective and objective perspective about the ongoing situation. I sat and listened to Chief McDonald's presentation just now and I noticed that he conveniently left out for the public, the recommendation that said either you should get more into transporting or you should reduce the transporting. Because if you get into transporting, if you transport 100% from your area, you can potentially bring in, what was it? It was 12 to 14 million dollars, depending on what their collection rates would be. If they got out of transporting and went back to the way things were pre-1999, which I was a part of and when we had, I should say, a kind of a better rapport between inter-agencies, if, if we, if they went back to that, the savings to the taxpayer could be up to 18 million dollars. So just on, on its face, it's huge monetary savings to the taxpayer. What was the other thing? Oh, Councilman Coffin, before the meeting, you came over and you were talking with us a little bit, talking about reducing inefficiencies and I really don't want to talk for very long, but I did, last night when I was preparing a couple little things, I did pull up some statistics from the city's own website and from Clark County's website, just because they were readily available to me. When we talk about efficiencies, I pulled, I looked at the numbers and it did, may I continue just for another few seconds?
Just if you would.
Okay. It says that the city fire department covers an area which is less than half of what the Clark County Fire Department covers just in the greater Las Vegas value. In fact, the county's area is 120% larger than the city's and the population is 51% greater. Despite that, they managed to deliver fire and EMS services with only 30% more physical stations, only 18% more employees, including administration, and only 10% more fire rescue units, all while keeping their response times very comparable. So if we're talking about reducing inefficiencies.
Thank you.
I think that that's something you need to look at.
We appreciate your coming forward and your comments because as you know, we have a wonderful new fire chief who is really in dialogue to keep, keep our community safe and I know your information will be of service to him as he goes forward with the team, so we thank you. And we'll go on, appreciate it.
Can I just say, you know, I would encourage you to look at the numbers too because the way that they are compiled between city and county, totally different methodology. So I would like, I mean, compare apples to apples when you look at that.
Thank you very much. Don't forget your water bottle.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Barbara, and if you would state your name for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Barbara Larson and I am a business owner in the city of Las Vegas area. I have also worked in EMS for 38 years and I work part-time for AMR. I definitely don't work there for the money and if something happened where my job went away, it wouldn't impact me financially. I've also done my time with fire, so I have a little bit of knowledge of each area. So I wanted to let you know that I've talked to several business owners, well, more than several hundreds, and that all of us object to a government competing with private business because that's not what our government is here for. You're here to provide essential services for us, of which EMS is one of them, but not to compete. And it, I mean, it would be the same thing, an essential service is a utility, but we wouldn't go just take over the utility company and, you know, start running the utility company. And I like the idea that the chief put the survey out there that was done because we are, when I talk about we, I mean from the AMR point of view, because we are contracted to the city, we're part of the city in that response. So that survey included all of the responses that had been made and the dual response is working because these people are happy. And I was also happy that Councilwoman Tarkanian brought up the point about the concerns of the citizens because I've been out there, especially in the last two weeks, talking to people, retired people, business people and asking them what their concerns are. Seems like they're just not educated on the processes. Like they want to know, hey, why do we send two people to these emergencies? And I had a couple of real short examples for you. You'll notice in the downtown area, we've got some older motels that have been converted to apartments. Some are two-story, some are three-story, they don't have an elevator in them. So for an example, if you responded to an emergency for a person who wasn't breathing very well and they maybe weighed 400, 450 pounds and you only sent just one agency with two people on the ambulance, how are you going to breathe for that person and give them the medical, medical care they need, plus get them down the stairs? And we also have people, when we respond, they want to fight. They might be under the influence of drugs, they might be under the influence of alcohol. Dispatchers are awesome at getting information, but they can't get everything and we just have to be prepared when we get there.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that you care, you're giving information because everything that we're doing requires our research and our responsibility to what and how we're doing it. So we thank you for coming forward.
I have just one request from you and I would like to request that you gather more information on your own and to do that, my suggestion is, is that I would like to invite each and every one of you to come do a ride-along at AMR for 12 hours and see for yourself what actually goes on out there and possibly talk with the chief and do a shift with the fire depart, and not just for like two hours, like actually come out there and just see what it's like and do one with them and then you get information from both sides and as we come to you and ask you for a decision, you would be able to make a more informed decision because you were there and you saw it happen for yourself.
Thank you. We appreciate that. And you have to be Roy Kiefer.
Yes, I am.
You are Roy Kiefer, okay. Thank you very much for coming and participating.
Good afternoon, council. I'll try to as brief as, make it as brief as possible. Basically mine will be just a series of questions that you'll have to ask yourself because I know we're not going to get an answer in two minutes. Basically you have to remember that whenever you guys are looking at upsizing, caring for the capacity of the patients in Las Vegas, I've been a paramedic in Las Vegas over 20 years. My family, my family lives in Las Vegas, Ward 6. Couple of concerns are the 9-1-1 response and the fact that the Las Vegas Fire Department does not want to respond in an auto aid system. Okay, my father lives in a county area that's an island in the middle of Las Vegas. If the Las Vegas Fire Department does not respond, that's dangerous, especially since they're looking at not responding to category deltas, which is life-threatening. And they're, they're saying they're not coming.
No, I misinterpreted.
I got a problem.
I thought alpha, they're not coming, delta, they go, everybody goes.
No, he says that they're working on a system where they don't respond to their partners because it saves them money. The part two is, is the $35 that we paid prior to 9/11 for station creations, when's that sunset? Is that a tax that stays permanently on the Las Vegas taxpayers or does it stay there or does it go away? The other ones that I'd have to be concerned with is me as a Las Vegas citizen, I've never passed a bill that allows the fire department to transport or, not transport, but to bill for services for transporting and I was just wondering where that money came from. So where that, Las Vegas, North Las Vegas and Henderson both passed a bill that allows their fire departments to transport and bill for these services. We have not. So there's something.
Thank you, those are very important questions. We really appreciate your participation. Thank you. At this point, not public comment. And so what I want to do is thank you, thank you all for coming and participating at this point. We do have public comment at the end of the meeting, but this was a report only and only because you had sent in those cards. Appreciate your caring enough to do that and participate. But chief, thank you and we appreciate it and look forward to everything else that's going to be coming.
Madam mayor, could I ask, madam mayor, could I just ask that the questions that were brought forward by these individuals, could somebody make sure we have them recorded? were brought forward by these individuals, could somebody make sure we have them recorded correctly, and then when we go into this further, we can have the answers?
Absolutely.
I'd like to hear the answers to the questions.
Okay, those are part of our record, which is why I allowed them in. I wanted to make sure that we had the comments recorded.
Right, right. It's part of our record, and then for our next meeting, we'll be able to have the answers.
Well, at the appropriate time. Thank you. And Councilman Bier.
Thanks, Your Honor. I guess this is the point to, for us to discuss this. It's not being, we're not being asked for our vote, one way or the other, but I would vote against this proposal if I had an opportunity. First question I've heard asked that needs answering is, why do we have a dual response? I think that is very misunderstood. And the way I would describe it is that we have very highly-paid, very highly-trained, to the point just short of overtrained doctors, essentially, near-doctors, who are our employees, and they respond, along with a nurse, which is not as highly-trained, not as highly-paid, and that is AMR. And our quasi-doctors arrive on the scene, create medical stability as best they can, and then the nurse takes the task of getting that person to a care facility. If the idea is to conserve the precious human resources that we have invested very significantly in within the city, in my mind, that dual response is the way to stretch them out the most. Obviously, having them do the transport and sit through the perhaps 30, perhaps 15, perhaps 60-minute process of transferring the patient administratively to the hospital's care doesn't seem to me an efficient utilization of all that training and all that money that we pay As we saw in the portion of the chief's presentation where he had the map showing our levels of satisfaction, immediately below that in the booklet, which I think now is down at the other end of the dais, immediately below that in the booklet is the specific EMS question. And our citizens are either satisfied or very satisfied. There are no neighborhoods in the city where they're neutral or dissatisfied. So, it's clear that this change is not being driven by concerns that our residents have about the way we provide EMS services today. Something else is driving this. The end result, as I understand it, is that dispatch is going to assign emergency management service respondents to transportation tasks until the point that we don't have anymore to respond, and then AMR will respond. If that is the case, then the end result here is that some folks in our city are going to dial 911, and they're only going to see the nurse. The doctor won't show up. I don't like that. I understand that there are levels of minimum requirements of certification. We train far beyond that. No, I understand that there are minimum levels of certification...
Let's please be respectful here.
But we train our people far beyond those minimum levels of certification. For example, we have trained our people in cardiac response with new technology coming out of the University of Washington, that AMR has not invested in for its employees. And the nurse, by the way, isn't going to be carrying an opticon device to turn the red lights green. We don't allow AMR to have that tool, so they're kind of handicapped in getting there quickly. So, those are amongst the reasons I would have objecting to the plan that we've outlined before us today, if I were asked.
Okay, I think where we are is looking to the future, and I'm going to ask our city manager, how does the conversation, I know there's a process, how are things going forward? This is a report only, very informative, very helpful to us. But how does the conversation continue to get to the point where we need to be going?
Well, there's regular communication that's happening right now, and at various levels. So, the chief has been having regular conversations in his team with various representatives from AMR. I'm involved in some of those conversations with the executives of AMR. And we're striving to reach a point of stasis where we're delivering the best service with the most efficient system that we can, and taking into consideration all of the issues that have been brought forward today, and will continue to do that. I feel like there's a way to resolve some of the misunderstandings and some of the issues that seem to crop up as we move through any sort of change. I felt like I had the same level of commitment from the president of AMR in my conversation with him earlier this week. I feel very positive about that and the direction that we're going to work out, a system that can work for both agencies. So, I'm hopeful, and I'm happy to continue to report out to the mayor and council our progress in that regard.
I would really, I think the council would really appreciate it as you go through briefings and to continue on, because obviously, the bottom line is the service to our community, but also understanding the issues, not only with AMR. I'm sure there are other companies that either are already here that would like to be involved or may be coming. So, we thank you very, very much. I'm going to move on, because I think we've had, we're going to get feedback, and I really want to move along with things. Yes, Councilman Larson?
I just want to make a comment, a couple of comments with your permission, Mayor. Chief, thank you for the important, let me get into that in a second. Ms. Frewell, it's important that you have shared that with us, because I've heard through the grapevine, and we all know what hearsay is, and how it starts and continues to grow. I've heard that AMR has been, was radio silent for quite some time, and I understand that's being cleared up. But I've also heard that AMR management has been in the game and out of the game. And I don't know if there's any truth to that, but I want to put it on the record today that I hope that they are at the table with you in these discussions, because they have been a community partner with us for many years. The men and women that work for AMR are residents of this city. I will appreciate the SEIU and the AMR employees that are down here today, because you are professionals in your field. I don't think anyone has taken that away, certainly Councilman Bier's didn't mean to take that away from you in regards to what you do for this community. But that being said, Chief, I think this report, the ICMA report that I see President Scott Johnson in the audience today, President, if you remember, when we started going down this pathway of having the ICMA report done, our own employees were kind of challenged by it, and our own firefighters were challenged by what the results were going to be. I'm delighted at what the results are, because number one, it shows we are a top, we are one of the top fire departments in the country. I mean, bottom line, there was no ifs, ands, or buts about it. And I side with Councilman Bier's in regards to the professionalism and the skills of our firefighters, the men and women of our fire department. That's not to take away any of the professional skills that AMR employees have either. That's not where I'm going with that. But out of that report, some significant findings that we have to take a very good look at for the benefit of the taxpayer. We need to stretch that taxpayer dollar now. When budgets are constrained the way they are, how do we get the biggest bang for our buck? We've got the gear, we've got the manpower, what are we doing? We can't go to the baseball game and sit on the bench all day, is what I'm trying to say. So, I'm interested to see the direction we're going to go, Chief. I have expressed my thoughts to both AMR representatives and SEIU representatives, that, you know, I'm going to support you in this direction. And I want everyone, especially the community and the public, to know that if this does, if things don't work, we're going to reevaluate. And I almost stopped you when you said, "We're evaluating manpower on a regular basis," because you are regulating, you know, shift peaks and shift lows, and who's doing what, and where the calls are coming from, and that demographic. That is an ongoing situation for you in your department, Chief. I know that. And that's not going to stop. Likewise, any changes or implementation in standard operations procedures that we do as a fire department are going to be monitored very closely, especially by this scrutinizing body known as the Las Vegas City Council. We want to make sure we're providing the best benefit to the residents in this city, using the resources that we have and the resources of AMR. AMR's not going away. They're still our community partner. And I want to make that very clear. We can't do it alone. We'd be having a totally different discussion if that was the case. So, I just want to put those comments on the record, Mayor. Appreciate you guys coming down to listen to what's going on. Appreciate the efforts of you, Chief, and the ICMA for putting out this report.
And the conversation is going to continue, so just to be assured on that. Councilman, oh, one more.
I meant, the gentleman from, whose father lives in the county island, lives in Ward 6. We respond, and I don't want the public to think otherwise, Las Vegas Fire and Rescue responds to those county islands. Whether in Councilwoman's ward, Councilman Barlow's ward, or my ward, we respond, and that's beyond that mutual aid. There aren't any yellow fire trucks out there in the northwest. And that's, it's not a bad thing, it's just the way it is. But I just wanted the residents to know that, and folks who live in those county islands, we still represent you and will serve and protect you as well.
Okay, if you will, briefly, so we can move on on this.
Well said. Well said, Councilman. Don't take off just yet.
Oh, okay.
I know you're in a rush.
Trying to sneak over.
I know you're in a rush. This is a very important topic of conversation for the greater good of the community. And so, for that, you had alluded to, Chief, you've mentioned that you're looking to reduce inefficiencies.
Yes, sir.
What are just a few of the inefficiencies that you've identified that you're looking or that you're addressing currently?
Well, this was one of the big ones, where we have two transport units going to one call with one patient. That's a significant underutilization of very limited resources. And so, we took a, made a decision on Monday to reduce that significantly on a daily basis, so that when our companies are there, when they're available, when they're right, very close to the incident, that we just dispatch what's needed. We've done that in many ways, and in fact, I think it was really important. There's a lot of behind-the-scenes things that were done. When I got here, I thought that it was important for us to start to reestablish our role as a primary provider of prehospital care services. It's our role and responsibility to the community. But I wanted to make sure that we had done all the things, or we were doing all the things behind the scenes that we needed to do in order to be able to do that. And one of those was to look at the amount of time that our companies are unavailable because of whatever the reason is, whether they're on a call, or their unit is broken down, or they're training, or whatever those kinds of things are. And one of them was that we, sometimes we were sending on, based on past practices, more equipment to some calls than we needed. So, we might, to this building, we might send, with just one alarm going off, we might send three engines, two trucks, and a rescue, and two battalion chiefs, when it's one of the most protected buildings in the city. And most likely, we can handle it with something less than that. And so, what that does is, instead of drawing all those companies out of their first due areas where they could be providing service on the next call, or the really critical call, they're down here. And so, we've started to reduce all of those kinds of responses, so that we just send one engine, maybe, and maybe a rescue, or one engine and a truck, when it's indicated, so that we keep everybody else in their district, because our number-one service is response time. And in terms of being able to provide that, it's all about distance and where you're located. And you can shorten the distance between where you are and where the call is, that's how you reduce response time. So, keeping them available in their first due area is what we've been working on, and keeping them available for the calls.
Thank you.
I must commend you on something that you've implemented since you've been here. And this is something that I'm not aware that has taken place in the past, and that's, you know, not to put a blemish on anyone that came before you, but that's your relationship that you developed with meeting with AMR on, what is it, a weekly or a monthly basis?
About every three weeks. It was my very first day here, and then it's been about every three weeks since that time. And sometimes it's more contact in between, but it's about every three weeks we meet with them.
And when you and I met, you had also mentioned that you were meeting with other agencies around the community to basically get engaged, and also to see how, in fact, you know, you can look at other, the possibility of, whether it be shared services or regional services, in order to reduce inefficiencies as well, correct?
That's correct. In my past experiences, I have found that looking at more than one provider provides the ability for maybe the city to receive better service, even if it's the same partner that you have. And so, I've spent time talking with other ambulance providers in the area to determine what sort of partnership might be available with those folks. And interestingly enough, I've found that the business practices that one provider may have might be 180 degrees from another one. It really has to do with how they provide the service. And so, you can find that, even though they're doing the same sorts of things, and they're providing the same sort of backup service for an agency, they go about it in a very different way. And so, I think that there's an opportunity here. If we're really partners, and we can really work really closely together and integrate the resources that we have, and make sure that we're just sending the only units that need to go, I think that we can vastly improve the level of service that we provide there.
And there will be.
Chief, thank you for your leadership. I appreciate it.
Thank you. And Councilman, too, I just do know there are other companies, looking, private companies in this area, that are looking to come here, and that will be competition on the private sector, which will also force self-evaluation and all the private partners that the city has.
Right.
So, your dialogues are huge and long, and so, please, city manager, you just will proceed on. Councilman Coffin wanted to make a comment, but to get back to us on this, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's just simply this, our first public speaker today said that, used a comparison of the Las Vegas Fire Department numbers to the Clark County Fire Department numbers on response. And I don't quibble with numbers, because they're probably accurate. What I want to say is that, to the public that's not aware of how this works here, LVFD takes care of the downtown, it takes care of the inner city. Clark County does not have an inner city. It is suburbs. And although there's a lot of action on the strip, basically, that is why LVFD has, you know, so many more responses and takes a little bit longer altogether, because they are complex cases involving things that happen in inner cities. And, you know, it's just a little different.
Okay. Councilman, if I could comment on that, as you look across the country in terms of firefighter staffing per thousand, it's a relative evaluation, but it is one that's maintained on a daily basis, on an annual basis. We have about 550, almost 600 firefighters for a population of about 600,000 people. It's about one firefighter per thousand. Actually, it's a little less than that. There are cities that are comparable, maybe not as dense, not as populated, and not as visited, that have, Boston has 3.3 firefighters per thousand. So, there is no, in my opinion, we need every firefighter that we have. We are not overstaffed in any way, shape, or form.
Thank you. Okay, thank you for this report, and thank you all for coming, and you'll be part of the conversation. So, thank you. Appreciate it. We'll move on to agenda item number 36. Mr. Levis, I have your name here. This is an administrative report on shared services.
Hi, Mayor.
Good morning.
Ted's going to join me down here. We do have a brief update that I wanted to give you on the shared services progress between us and the city of North Las Vegas, and I'll rely on Ted to fill in any details that I might miss, but just trying to keep it brief and succinct. Over the last couple of weeks, several weeks, we've kind of taken a break from having the formal Service Sharing Committee meetings. That gave us a needed respite to be able to address some of the issues that have been unfolding at the city of North Las Vegas regarding their financial health. As you may remember, one of the things that was the first step in this process was to get that financial health report complete. And that occurred. We reported that out here at a prior council meeting. But there's been a ripple impact associated with that as it relates to the Service Sharing Committee's activities. Really, the issue for us at that point was, what problem was the Service Sharing Committee there to solve for? Saving money, generating revenue, and to what degree? So, there's been quite a bit of conversation going on regarding that process, kind of behind-the-scenes between your key staff, some of our elected officials, and our counterparts at North Las Vegas, as well as various community members that have an interest. However, during that intervening period, we've continued to work on three key areas. Economic development and redevelopment, which we're continuing to work towards a potential partnership there, and hopeful that we may be able to reach some sort of accord here in the next coming weeks, maybe even later this month. We're also working on parks. As you know, we have a tremendous amount of demand for our parks in this region, and North Las Vegas has some regional assets in that regard, that in a partnership, we might be able to benefit mutually from better utilization of their assets and their infrastructure, if there's a way for us to partner, as we're programming our active fields along with them as they program theirs. And then finally, in an area where they don't have any activity and we do, is parking. They do not have a parking enforcement program, and as, I believe it was Councilman Anthony, so adeptly titled Brandy this morning, the Parking Czar, she's been working on a proposal to try and help North Las Vegas address some of their issues related to parking enforcement, utilizing our staff that might benefit us in our ability to address some of our parking needs, and parking infrastructure needs, and things of that nature. So, that's, I would say, somewhat in its infancy or beginning stages of conversation. But those are the three key areas that we're focusing in on right now, and will likely start to hit those Service Sharing Committee agendas over the coming weeks and months. The reason why I brought up the issue of North Las Vegas's financial health is that at North Las Vegas's request, some of their issues related to their union settlement, the finding of the courts regarding their, the outstanding collective bargaining issues, their financial forecast, their structural deficit, their ability to rebuild service delivery, all those things that have been... delivery, all those things that have been being discussed at special council meetings at the city of North Las Vegas, do weigh heavy on their ability to make decisions based on the committee's recommendations. So, North Las Vegas requested that the committee begin to hear similar items regarding their financial health. It's a little bit of a different, a little bit of a different tangent along the same lines of the Service Sharing Agreement. It's relevant to what the Service Sharing Committee is taking up, as far as evaluating those potential agreements. So you're going to start to see on upcoming agendas, both reports on what North Las Vegas is attempting to do to address their fiscal health, as well as the potential Service Sharing Agreement. So you're going to kind of see two tracks of activities going on. And just to wrap up, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have about this, or Ted, if I've missed something, let me know. The next meeting is tomorrow. It's here, it's at 3:00. We're going to televise it. So every time that there's a meeting of the Service Sharing Committee at the city of Las Vegas, we're going to televise it. One of the things that we heard very clearly from our legislators, that represent both the city and the city of North Las Vegas, that they wanted to hear more, and they wanted to participate more, the Department of Taxation, Committee on Local Government Finance members. So we believe this will create a little more transparency and ease of access to the information that's being presented, utilizing KCLV Channel 2, and our talented staff here, as well as these fantastic facilities, that make it easier to get that information out to the general public. So we're kind of excited about the potential that brings to engage more people in this dialogue as we go forward. So that's my update. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have, and we'll...
Will you take comments from the public when you have this meeting?
Yes, they're posted in public meetings. So absolutely.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Fredwell, and your staff, Mr. Levis, you as well, for this arduous task at hand. I'm fully cognizant of what you guys have been up to and what's been going on. I want to say this about the televising of these meetings, as my conversation with some of our lawmakers and other local elected officials has been the transparency, and by no way, shape, or form have we meant to keep these behind closed doors. We want this to be as transparent as possible through, so with your assistance, Mr. Rigman and your team, getting that message out there, that we want these to be transparent. We want those lawmakers, we want the citizens of both the city of Las Vegas and North Las Vegas to participate in these discussions and understand the significant opportunities here, both for the city of Las Vegas and the city of North Las Vegas, and the significant weaknesses to the city of Las Vegas and the city of North Las Vegas, should they exist. I'm sure there's some out there. I think the topics and the areas that you have defined for a good relationship are important. And I think that, I've said this from the beginning as we've gone down the shared services path, that we are sister cities. And I don't think this has occurred in any other place in the country in regards to cities that have been challenged financially. And I, so I think it's, the rest of the country could be watching us in regards to how we go down this path. And I certainly hope Mayor Lee and the North Las Vegas City Council recognize this as an opportunity to actually show some good leadership in a time of crisis. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Excellent point.
Madam Mayor, could I just make a point? Is it, are we sending it out in the media so people know they can watch it on TV?
I don't know. We could probably put some things out on, through social media, and do a press release and those kinds of things, Councilwoman, absolutely.
I think it's important that they know they can do that.
Oh, good. Okay, perfect. Thank you, David.
Tweet away. Tweet away. Thank you, Ms. Fredwell.
Thank you.
And so, Mr. Levis, are you? Okay, and the financial impact of how you're moving along with these two presentations, we'll show the financial impact, if there's anything on the city, as you move through that process.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm here for the next item, too. I just had the wrong notes. I apologize. So I don't know if you need to close out the prior item and call the next item, Mayor, unless there are any questions on 36.
Any questions, anyone on 36? I think you've got happy campers here.
Okay.
Thank you. We're excited and look forward to hearing how we can help.
Thank you.
And how we can also sustain ourselves. Thank you.
Fantastic.
Okay, so with this point, that was a report only. We will now move on to Agenda Item 37, Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Ratification of Vanetta Appleyard as Director of Finance, that at a salary of $140,000-plus benefits general fund. And so here we are with Ms. Fredwell again.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. That's Ed Fredwell again, City Manager. It is my honor to be here with Vanetta Appleyard. She's been our treasurer for the city of Las Vegas since 2005, as well as our financial services manager. She has an incredible background, working for the Howard Hughes Corporation for many years, as well as some other private casino operators in her history. She is a certified public accountant, and has done an incredible job for the city of Las Vegas. She was an instrumental part in helping us define and prepare a way to be able to do the financing for this new city hall, $185 million worth of certificates of participation. Vanetta was instrumental in making sure that that happened, and that we were able to meet all our obligations in that regard. I believe that Vanetta, because of her experience here at the city of Las Vegas over the last eight to nine years, really puts her in a unique position to understand what we've all weathered. The highs of robust growth and incredible GDP growth here locally, but also what it feels like when things come to a screeching halt in the economy. She helped us through her budgeting skills and marshaling the forces in finance, financial services, over the last five years, in preparing budgets that we continually monitor and manage to, and don't exceed, which I think is a really important skill set, to have that. So she has a unique understanding of our needs, what we've been through, where we need to go. She's, as you would say, Mayor, fiscally conservative. And when I talked to many of the directors about her, as I was considering this appointment, every one of them said, "We enjoy working with Vanetta. She is not a pushover. She asks hard questions, but she listens, she's willing to work things out so that we can get the job done out in the field." It doesn't get any better than that. So it's with my great pleasure that I present to you for ratification, Vanetta Appleyard is our next finance director for the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you. Congratulations. Well, not congratulations yet, we have to vote on this, but I noticed you didn't put anybody in place that is taller than you.
Well, I did put in the fire chief, and he's a bit taller than I am.
Right. Okay, comments, questions from Council?
Much success in advance. You most definitely have my support. Good luck to you. Keep up the great work.
Great. I think that's echoed in Councilman Ross.
I just want to know by a show of hands, where's the finance department today?
Woo-hoo!
That's what I'm talking about, Vanetta. When you got the support of your team behind you, that sends a clear message to us. So congratulations, I'm fully going to support you.
Okay, so therefore, since you made that wonderful statement, how about you make the, oh wait, we have another comment down to the right.
I'm just thinking about all those debits and credits floating around upstairs right now. No place to land. I echo Councilman Ross' sentiment. Emailed you the same a week ago. Congratulations and good luck.
Okay, so Councilman Ross, since you were right there, why don't you follow up with making a motion?
I would move, Your Honor, to follow staff's recommendations to ratify Vanetta Appleyard as the city of Las Vegas Director of Finance.
There's a motion. Please vote, and then please post.
Yes. Wonderful.
I just wanted to thank the finance staff for being here.
Congratulations. Make sure you stay rested.
Yes, and I wanted to thank the finance staff for being here. They've been awesome supporting me as I served as acting. They've just been wonderful, so, and thank you all very much for your support as well.
Thank you. Congratulations. Wonderful team. Okay, we'll move on to Agenda Item 38, Report for Possible Action Regarding the Activity and Progress of the Employment Plan Policy Designed for the City of Las Vegas Economic Development Projects, Further Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency Projects. This is in reference to all awards. And, yes, good morning, Mr. Arnt.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor, members of council. For the record, Bill Arntz, Director, Economic and Urban Development. In introducing this item, I'd like to say for this item, quite simply, where there's a will, there's a way. This is our employment plan policy, where we have a goal for local hiring, but also an aspirational goal for minority participation on projects both with, through the redevelopment agency, but also economic development projects for the city. I'm glad to report that we have five projects reporting. They are all in compliance. These projects are Barrister Global Network Services, Las Vegas Shakespeare Company, Large Properties, which is building and development in Enterprise Park, Las Vegas ICE, which is the Federal Justice Tower, and Take-Two Interactive Software. Two of those projects, Large Properties and Las Vegas ICE, are in development, and we don't have employment statistics yet. But the other three, however, I wanted to mention that all three reported that over 50% of their hiring was allocated, or was with persons who are either racial minorities, women, or disabled veterans. So we think that's quite remarkable, given that we stated a goal of 15% for our aspirational goal. So with that, I would like to deliver the report, and our recommendation is that you'd accept the report. Thank you.
Please, go ahead. No questions? Comments? So we will take a motion to approve the oral report that was given here, and that we probably all have group backup.
And the backup showing the employment statistics is in your backup documentation.
Great. Thank you. Motion, please. Do you want to move, Councilwoman?
Move to approve.
There's a motion to approve. Please vote, and please post. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And on to Public Works, Agenda Item 39, Abeyance Item Presented by Jorge Cervantes, City of Las Vegas Executive Director, Community Development on Transportation Projects to Be Construction, Constructed Through the Fuel Revenue Index, FRI, all awards. This is so exciting, I love this part the best. Can't wait to see what you're covering.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Jorge Cervantes, Executive Director, Community Development.
And my name is David Bowers, City Engineer.
Mayor, this morning, you all approved a couple of contracts that were for professional services, having to do with some pedestrian safety improvements. These are projects that are being funded out of the revenue indexing funds that are being generated. So we want to give you an update on just overall, some of the projects that we'll be doing here in the city, and how it impacts our whole region. So when we look at the revenue indexing, what is it that we're talking about? What we're talking about is tying the rate of inflation to the fuel tax that's collected on motor vehicle fuel tax. This tax hasn't been adjusted since 1995, when it was established. So the last 20 years, we've lost a lot of purchasing power in being able to construct the needed infrastructure for our valley. It was authorized during the 2013 session, under Assembly Bill 413, which gave the Clark County Commission the authority to implement this within the Clark County area. It'll be indexed over the next three years. After three years, in 2016, it'll sunset. At that time, it'll go back out as a vote to the general public, and ask if they want to continue indexing the fuel tax, to continue doing more projects moving forward. And so the first indexing took place January 1st, and it was a three cent increase on the price of fuel. When we look at what we're going to be able to do with this new revenue source, based on that three-year indexing, we're going to be able to bond for approximately $700 million worth of revenue to do much-needed infrastructure improvements. And so what this will do is allow us to not just local projects, but even regionally significant projects. Some of these regionally significant projects include completing more portions of the Clark County 215 to bring it up to freeway standards. There's still sections that need to be upgraded. And it also allows to do the first phase of Interstate 11 with the Boulder Highway Pass to get that project going.
Could I ask a question here?
Sure.
The three cents per year, it's just automatic three cents regardless of what the price of fuel is. It doesn't fluctuate with the cost of fuel to the individual?
It does fluctuate. It's based on the 10-year average of the production price index, and so whatever that 10-year average, whatever that percentage is, is what will be adjusted. They're projecting it'll be about three cents per year. Over the three years, the total, about 10 cents. So first year, three cents, next year maybe 3.2 cents, in that range there.
Thank you very much. Do you have another question, please, Councilman?
Thank you. Just to be clear, Jorge, you stated that this will have a renewal vote at some point in the future. That renewal vote won't, I would assume, can't undo the existing, or the indexing that will have taken place at that point, since we're able to bond against the increment. I presume that the increment is permanent.
That is correct, Councilman. That is permanent, perpetual, and that's how we're able to bond against that revenue stream. Going forward, any additional increase would have to be through a vote of public.
So that's, you know, it's additional indexing after we go through three or four years of indexing that would be voted on.
That is correct.
Okay, thanks.
And so again, this revenue is going to allow us to do Valley White about 183 transportation projects throughout. As we were developing the list of needed projects within the city, we really looked at it from three categories. What are those projects that we need to do to continue rehabilitating our roadways? We've got a significant investment in our infrastructure out there, our assets of roadways. How do we continue to preserve them so that we can extend the life of those roadways? The second category is, we looked at what are those traffic and pedestrian safety improvements that we started really about four, five years ago, and that we want to keep that program moving forward. You know, one of the things that you'll be seeing pretty soon is our study on pedestrian safety. But what we're going to find is that even though traffic volume in this community has increased, and even though traffic accidents as a community as a whole have increased in the city, you're going to see that our numbers have gone down. And it's due mainly because all the improvements that we've done over the last four, five years relate to traffic and pedestrian improvements. We want to keep that program going and keep it funded. And the final category was continuing complete streets. How do we build and design these roads that are for all users, not just our vehicles, but how do we accommodate our pedestrians out there, our bicyclists, our folks waiting for a bus? And so doing roadway improvements that help us really do these complete streets out there for all users. So in total, about $100 million is going to be invested within the city, allowing us to do about 50 projects in the city limits.
Actually, go to your next slide, Mr. Cervantes, with the mayor's permission. Okay, that's awesome. I hope you have in here the number of jobs anticipated. Do you have that in the report?
We do, Councilman, it's toward the end.
Then I will sit down and be quiet, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
More specifically, the types of projects that will be done in the city. The first type of projects that Jorge spoke of were the roadway reconstruction projects. And we actually received $22 million in funding for this type of work, that'll fund 14 different projects, and they'll be managed by Operations and Maintenance Division. The first year, we have nine miles of overlays prepared, Decatur Boulevard Eastern and Lake Mead on either side of US 95. The second year, we'll have Smoke Ranch, Alta, Valley View, and a good portion of Washington. Our third year, we're going to have Buffalo, Cimarron, Elkhorn, and Town Center in Summerlin. The second type of projects, the traffic and pedestrian safety upgrades, will allow us to build four signalized intersections, and actually, at Lamon Owens is an existing intersection that we're replacing. 14 pedestrian flasher signal installations. And what these do, these are pedestrian actuated signals, so if we have an arterial roadway or a busy road where there's an existing crosswalk, this will allow pedestrians to stop the traffic and cross safely. Third type, the intersection crosswalk streetlight upgrades, and these are basically, our traffic division's done research to determine our highest pedestrian usage at our intersections, and we'll upgrade the lighting at these intersections to make them safer. They're doing 12 school crosswalk curb extensions. These are the bulb outs, you might have heard of previously, to make the crosswalk shorter, make vehicles slow down a little bit. And there are 12 elementary schools here in town, and we're trying to bump it up to 24 if possible, but we're sure we're going to get these 12 at least. There's going to be five new bus turnouts on Charleston, east of Boulder Highway, so that's going to help our traffic out there quite a bit. And then the next part is our complete streets concept that Jorge mentioned. We have some large projects coming in because of this money, and there's quite a bit of funding, and it's been a great boon to the city. The main commerce couplet, the first phase of this project from Stewart to Bonneville is going to occur this, I'm sorry, in April. So we'll be moving material out there very quickly. And there's a second phase of that, from Bonneville South down to approximately where it connects to Las Vegas Boulevard, that'll occur about a year later. We have a few more downtown street skate projects, where we've seen the green bike lanes, the wider sidewalks, on Sixth Street, Coolidge, Carson, and Gas. And then we also have a new roadway we're planning for a connector road, the Cultural Vista Connector, Veterans Memorial to Maryland eventually, probably a intermittent connection to Las Vegas Boulevard. And then we have Las Vegas Boulevard, Stewart to Charleston. This is an older section of road for us, and it's kind of our front door, so we're looking forward to improving this to street skate concept. Charleston, Main to Fremont, so that's another older section of roadway that it commutes on improvement of this nature. And then in the medical district, we're improving a couple of roads as well. Charleston, through that section between MLK and Rancho, and Shadow Lane as well.
Are the owners... Are the owners of the property, even if they're not occupants of the property along Main, along Charleston, wherever you're doing this, which is fabulous, are they being notified that they, that you are doing this in case they want to go ahead and do something themselves, either on the interior or the exterior to their properties?
Yes, Mayor. Part of the design is the public outreach, so we'll make sure we reach out those individuals to let them know what we're doing. And you're right, that'll probably spur some economic improvements as well on their part.
Okay, thank you. So, Councilman Coffin?
Thank you. I've got a good example of what they're doing. Is it the Weehirk or the Heather Wedding Chapel that's downtown at, is it Carson or Bridger and the Boulevard?
It is on Carson.
Okay, so I appreciate the fact they came to me, had a meeting. We tried to help them. That's so historic. Some old trees we're going to work around, going to try to keep some things in place so that they don't lose the atmosphere, which has been so important for people getting married there at least 60 years. So that seems like that, I'm confident our department's working with the people who own the businesses. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a comment, and this kind of has something to do with your report as you guys are presenting this to us, but I wanted to mention, Councilman Coffin, I travel East Bonanza between Eastern and Lamb frequently, and since you've had that cross, that signalized crosswalk installed or that flasher crosswalk installed, I see a significant change in driver behavior on Bonanza right there. And it's really interesting because I've, for years, I've been using that route for union purposes, and I mean, I'm guilty of speeding down that street, and I really see a significant change in the people who live in that area with the schools and the park and the apartments and the density that, you know, 35 miles an hour are being, and so being obeyed, Councilman. I just want to let you know that.
And it explains, Mayor, why the Councilman is always poaching in my district doing things. But you know what is so good about Councilman? He tweets something wherever he is, and he always includes me in the tweet. Thank you very much. Okay.
Could I ask a question?
Certainly, please.
In what we were doing around that Circle Park area, I thought we were doing complete streets there, or was that a different category?
It falls within. It's part of the walkable community, if you remember, Councilwoman. We adopted the metals walkable community. Some of the improvements that came out of the study was trying to make it easier for the kids to cross to the parks, so we're doing bulb bouts at the four corners so kids can cross over.
Well, is that part of this project too? Will funding come from this? I didn't see it listed, that's why I'm asking.
No, that project was funded prior to this moving forward, so we had it funded under last year's cycle. And so we're currently in design, hoping to start that construction later on this year.
So it was funded previously, we're going to start it this year?
That's correct. Now, we did get some additional money out of the motor vehicle fuel tax to do more of the metals walkable community because we did what we could within the funding that was allocated, but that study did recommend additional items, so we did get some additional money to go back and do some more items that were identified in that study.
Because we really don't look as if we're complete streets there yet at all.
Yeah, we haven't started any of the construction yet. We're still doing design.
Okay, maybe we can meet sometime, and you can tell me what comes when.
Certainly.
Don't you, excuse me, don't you generally, though, put out a report that shows the timeline and when you, or you used to, where a project such as the one that Councilwoman's mentioning, when's the start and your hope for completion?
Yeah, what we do is we present council twice a year, biannually, a report of the capital projects that lists all the capital projects, what the status is, and a little bit of information on, and that includes a timeline on there.
Thank you.
And so when we look at, what are the benefits of this fuel revenue? So it's going to allow us to, again, as we said, preserve our existing roadways. That huge investment that we have out there helps preserve those assets. It's going to improve the safety and quality of life of everybody who uses our roads, whether it's a pedestrian, a bicyclist, help it makes it for them to transport. And Councilman, as you were asking, it's going to create over 9,000 direct and induced jobs to really help our economy. Our construction sector was one of the ones that was hardest hit when the economy turned down. This is going to do a lot to help that sector really move forward.
And with your permission, Mayor?
Yes, please.
And I think that's significant that we highlight those 9,000 plus or minus direct and induced jobs. And I hope that the public, when the time comes to vote on this again by the electorate, understands the importance of us continuing to enhance our infrastructure, roadways, conveyances. And I say that because as I traveled to other cities, I often get complaints in our own city from residents that, you know, oh, our streets are tore up or this or that. Have you traveled in California lately? You know, and I have to say that because we've really got some great systems, and they're, some of them are old, especially in the older parts of the city of Las Vegas, and we've got to, as a government, invest in those and keep them to the quality that we'd like them to be for the benefit of our residents. This fuel, what is it, fuel?
Revenue.
Revenue?
Indexing.
Indexing has been such a significant boon, especially to the construction industry. You recognize that. And I, I mean, I'm already meeting now with general contractors who want to be the ones that get picked to do the Interstate 11 loop around the Boulder City bypass.
I hope they're very young.
Well, this is significant. This is very-
This is 30 years.
This is very significant stuff for the benefit of our community. We are a global community, Mayor. You and I both sit on the LBCBA. We talk about it all the time. We need that global connectivity. We need to enhance our infrastructure, and this is the vehicle, pardon the pun, the vehicle, or pun intended, that will get us there.
Well, he's rubbing off on you. This is so exciting, it's like putting paintings in a home and plants. I mean, what you do is so exciting because it really makes our city just warm and inviting in a place we all want to be. I hope you keep spending.
And so, Mayor, I want to take advantage of also being up here today, not just give you an update on the fuel revenue index, but also give you an update on Interstate 11. You know, as Councilman Ross indicated, it's an important project for our community. Just a little bit of background, as you recall, Interstate 11 was approved by Congress in 2012 as an interstate system connecting the Phoenix Metropolitan Area with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Area. You know, these are the only two large metropolitan areas in the country that weren't connected through an interstate system, so Congress passed an action to make it a priority corridor and do it. But this Interstate 11 is really just one smaller component of a larger intermountain west corridor that's going to be part of the Canamix corridor that's going to allow for the movement of goods and freight between Mexico, the U.S., and Canada, and so this will be one portion of it.
How much is the federal government going to put in? Was that allocated at that time? I know the answer.
The money hasn't been allocated yet. The money's been allocated to do some of the studies. As you mentioned, Mayor, it's going to be a 23-year process to do the whole corridor. It takes time. The first phase, the one in Nevada, is the one that we're funding out of the revenue that's being generated to do that Boulder bypass. The good thing, Mayor, is when you look at it, the bulk of the improvements are in Arizona now, Nevada, so we're getting the portion of ours out of the way. Arizona's the one that's going to be more challenged to get that portion done, but they're working on it, and they have been for a while. As we, as we looked at the Interstate 11, when they started doing the analysis of different alignments, they did what was called a Level One analysis. And what this did, it looked at a whole universe of different alignments going through the Phoenix area, going through the Las Vegas area, going through the state of Nevada, going through the state of Arizona. Within that Level One analysis, there was 11 different alignments that were studied through our metropolitan area. Those went through a series of more quantitative analysis to see which ones had fatal flaws that would allow them to move forward. Out of that analysis, four alignments were recommended to move forward to what's called a Level Two analysis, which is really a more in-depth analysis that's more of a quantitative analysis that looks at what are the economic impacts, what are the impacts to congestion, are the roadway capacities there, what environmental challenges are there. And so I wanted to share with you the four that came out of the Level One and went to the Level Two. This one here is Alternative Y, and what it does, it follows the alignment of the existing Clark County 215 through the south, and then uses the 215 around the west to connect back up to US 95, New US 93. Some of the advantage that this has, some of the opportunities that it presents, is that that corridor is already there. Some of the challenges that it presents is that it's going through areas that are really populated with residential population. Some of the adjacent land use may not be compatible with the introduction of a lot more traffic, particularly commercial traffic. There's about 10 schools that are in close proximity to this alignment that could be impacted, and so some of the constraints with this alignment. Alternative C follows the US 95 I-515 alignment going through the middle of the metropolitan area. Again, some of the opportunities, if there's a facility over there, a corridor there that could use, some of the constraints, it goes through probably a mostly densely and mostly congested corridor anywhere in this, in this valley. It goes to the spaghetti bowl, which today doesn't have capacity, introduces truck traffic and congestion, and so this one has some challenges.
Goes by our arena.
It does go by the arena, but also, again, introduces a lot of truck traffic where we may not have the ability to move that truck traffic. Alternative A was moved forward from Level One to Level Two, but was eliminated pretty early on in the analysis. The reason for that is, if you look at the alignment on the south side that's coming forward north, that really kind of mimics the previous one we saw under C. And so under the C alignment, you can still go north on I-15 under that alignment, so it really was just duplicating, so it was eliminated pretty, pretty early on. One of the advantages that this one had, though, is if you look at one of the purposes of I-11, is to how do we find a way to capitalize on the economic development that that brings? With all the additional commerce that could come through here, we are really strategically located to be a distribution logistics center for freight, to be able to get freight to come through here and distribute it throughout the western part of the country, and the northern area and northwest bay is around Apex, presents a great opportunity to create those type facilities up there, and this provided that connectivity to it.
I know Councilman Beers wanted to ask a question or make a statement, but what is the involvement with Project Neon as all of this is being discussed? And what their plans are, certainly that should be significant to the impact where 11 is going to go.
It is, Mayor, and Project Neon is moving forward as, as is needed to provide capacity to that corridor. One of the things that Project Neon found was that today it carries a significant amount of traffic, truck traffic, that's going from the California coast up to Salt Lake and further north. If I-11 were not to move forward sometime in the future, all that additional truck traffic would still come through I-15, which today is very constrained. One of the things that I-11 does, it allows that truck traffic to be distributed to alternate corridors. And so Project Neon, while it can expand on that capacity, it can only do so much, and so it doesn't have really the capacity to accommodate the future growth that we're expecting, plus the additional truck traffic that could come because of the commercial ports.
Thank you, and Councilman Beers. Nope, go. Please, continue.
And then the final alignment is alignment BBQQ, and it's BBQQ because really a combination of two different alignments that were similar enough that were combined. What this does, this creates a whole new corridor that goes through this part of the valley. It bypasses the more densely populated, the more congested area of the metropolitan area, and uses the east part to create a new connection. Some of the constraints is that there are no roadway there, it's a brand-new roadway we're going to have to create out of nowhere. Some of the opportunities are that it creates a way to divert that traffic from not congesting our corridor. It also creates the eastern portion of the Loop 215 that doesn't exist today. For years, we've said there's a need to do that eastern connection, this would do that. Another challenge is just the cost. This is costly alignment because we're going through new land, and it's going through some environmentally sensitive area. It's going through the Lake Mead recreational area, so those things have to be mitigated. And so the study is still going through the process, it looks to be wrapped up around July this year. They're going still through the public input process, they're receiving feedback from the stakeholders such as ourselves, the other jurisdictions, and the public trying to get feedback from, from everybody involved. The study recommended that the one that was the more reasonable and feasible alignment would be the BBQQ, again, because of not impacting going through the center of the cities. What's going to be carried forward is to look at all three alignments. Originally, it was recommended that this alignment be moved forward to further studies, but we found out today that they're going to look at all three alignments and push them forward to further analysis, see which one makes the most sense for our community.
Thank you. Interesting report.
And so with that, we just wanted to give you a brief update on where else some transportation projects, and be glad to answer any additional questions.
Councilman Coffin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I haven't looked detail on, in the reports, not just this one, but the reports that this is based upon, so I don't know the actual predicted amount of vehicular traffic, light vehicle traffic, that we expect to come, coming from Arizona and points east through us, and perhaps up to Reno or Ely in those two directions. But I think it's really important to know that because we have predicated this whole project upon, well, tourism certainly is part of the predicate, but the whole idea of joining together is done by NAFTA and the idea of trade, coming, Canamix trade. So we could see a lot of increase in truck traffic, heavy vehicle traffic, and our present taxation structure cannot cope with the road wear that is caused by the heavy vehicles. Even the indexing that you've referenced and has passed, I just make this speech, I think, probably once a year, Your Honor, but maybe twice, but the point is that this will not be enough money at all for, not only for the construction of roads, but also for the maintenance preservation of our existing roads, because we're falling behind, and the reason we're falling behind is our method of taxation. Okay, so we're moving from just a flat per gallon to an escalation in inflation per gallon, but still, the heavy vehicles cause an enormous amount of damage, and electric vehicles are here to stay, and they're increasing. I drive an electric vehicle that has used in the last two and a half years only 150 gallons of gas, and at least a third of that was spent in California, or more than that. So I've bought less than 100 gallons of gas in Nevada. That means I have spent, I have only, what, $80 in tax or $60 in tax for my 4,000-pound car running on these roads? I mean, it's incredible, and yet, the trucking industry has continually beaten back the idea that we should have weight and distance formulas to tax for all vehicles, all of them. So, you know, really, I hope in the discussion on I-11, because the increase, really the need of it is for trucks, and the passenger cars are going to come along, we need to consider the possibility that dedicated lanes for trucks or heavy vehicles are the backbone of the new I-11, and that they pay for and maintain those rights of way. That's one thing the trucking industry has said it will do, because they defeat us every time we've talked about weight-distance, and they get to Congress, and they work their will, and at the legislature. But one, one place they don't fight is the fact that they say they will pay for what we use, and so let's give them that opportunity. Let's dedicate a couple lanes, make it for the trucks, and maybe we can have peace in the family, and then the people who drive lighter vehicles will pay a fair share of the maintenance and construction money. So, please, I always want to keep that on the forefront of people's minds because they don't understand how it works. The average truck can cause about 10,000 times the wear on a road as a car can, and that certainly multiplies. So, again, it's not enough money, it's a start, but it won't be a good start until we make a change in how the taxation is levied. So thank you very much, Your Honor.
Great report. Anyone else making comment, whatever? What's going on across the street? I saw there was a pile of dirt, then it moved away, and now it's back. You already put in the sidewalk, you put in the trees.
On the back of, back of City Hall? It's part of the First Street project, Mayor. We're doing First Street, but we're also doing Lewis as part of that project. They're getting ready to wrap that up. In the next couple of weeks, I would think they're finishing it up. They're, they got the trees in, they're putting the gravel around the trees, and so it's part of the First Street improvements and the Lewis Street improvements.
And therefore, the right turn then will open up?
That's correct. Once they're done with it, they'll open that up.
Thank you. Looks great. Thank you very much. Appreciate the report.
Mayor, I just want to do a quick congratulations to Jorge. They just rolled out a new website on projects downtown that anybody's going to be able to go to, get the latest update. It's really an incredible tool for our citizens and business owners and people who are interested in investing in downtown. Just, it's an incredible website, so we'll get the link around to you and-
It's called Your Downtown, and Dave will send you all the link to it. We sent it out, we had our mailing list of all the folks that we worked over the years, where we had specially been, so it's a pretty extensive mailing list, a lot of the downtown business property owners, folks that are interested. We rolled it out to them yesterday, been getting some great feedback. We'll pass it on to Dave so he can pass it on to more folks out there and allow them that access.
Absolutely fabulous. Congratulations. Really an enticement to business and everybody everywhere. Yes, Councilman?
I'm sorry. I just wanted to also say that I was just, I just received the link, and I was just cruising around the link.
Instead of paying attention?
He's sitting right here in front of me. That's why I was cruising around the link so that I can- That's why I was cruising around the link so that I can...
Cruise away.
Also, Betsy beat me to the punch, because I was going to ask that he talk about what his department has done as it relates to the new rollout of Our Downtown. So it's pretty cool. So for the listening public and the viewers, you should go on to it, Our Downtown. It's a pretty nice, interactive link, and kudos to you. So thank you, Betsy.
Wonderful. Did you design it?
Well, actually, some of our staff did. Some of our staff's been working on it for a while and working with through IT and through the Office of Communication to try to get it out there. Anyway, just another way for us to communicate to our folks some of the projects they were working on specifically in the downtown.
It's wonderful, especially for those who are visual learners. Thank you. This is great. Okay, Agenda Item 40 has been abayed to the 19th of March. And so we'll move on to Agenda Item 40.
Mayor, just for one point of clarification. I'm sorry, I said Our Downtown. It's Your Downtown is the name of the link. Thank you, David. Your Downtown.
As long as it's not My Downtown. That sounds like Oscar. Me-I-my, instead of we-our-ours. So yours is good. Okay, Agenda Item 41, Bill Number 2014-8. Councilman Barlow, would you like that, the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2014-8, First Amendment, in order to amend the Unified Development Code to update the standards applicable to home occupation permits, establish parameters for cottage food operations to be conducted under this home occupation, and provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to recommending bill eligible for adoption at this meeting, Bill Number 2014-10. Councilman Barlow, would you like the bill read, please?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2014-10, in order to prevent the Director of Planning discretion as to when an ice cream truck shall be inspected prior to the issuance of its renewal of its business license and providing for other related matters.
I'd like to ask a question before you move on that. Why isn't this, why doesn't that inspection fall to the Health Department?
Flynn-Fag Department of Planning, there is a Health Department inspection also required, but this is for the city business license. And what we're doing is we're modifying the schedule so that we can do that at any point in time instead of just annually.
Oh, interesting. Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. And please post. Thank you. Motion carries.
Your Honor, excuse me, before you move on to the next bill, could we return to Item 41 just for a moment? I just want to make it clear for the record that Councilman Barlow made the motion for 2014-8. I wanted to make sure you wanted to make that First Amendment when you moved for approval.
He did not, and we should therefore what?
We can just reflect, if you'll just reflect for the record that your motion was to include First Amendment, we'll be fine.
For the record, Madam Clerk, I would like to reflect that Item Number 41 was First Amendment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, now we're on to Agenda Item 43, Bill Number 2014-11, possible action, oh, excuse me. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2014-11, in order to adopt the latest version of the Uniform Regulations for the Control of Drainage, together with local amendments pertaining drainage facilities and provide for other related matters.
Mayor, if there's no other comments or questions, I'll move for approval.
Thank you. There's a motion. Please vote. Motion carries. Agenda Item 44, Bill Number 2014-12. Councilman Barlow, would you like to have the bill read, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
Thank you, Councilman. Bill Number 2014-12, First Amendment, in order to update the appeal and hearing procedures for nuisance abatement in accordance with state law and provide for other related matters.
Thank you.
And if there's no other comments or questions, I'll move...
Sorry, that is First Amendment as well.
I'll move for approval of this item, First Amendment.
Thank you.
There's a motion. Motion carries. Agenda Item 45 has been abayed to the 2nd of April. And Agenda Items 46 and 47, Agenda Items 46 and 47, Bills Number 2014-13, 2014-45 will be heard at a later meeting. We'll move on to new bills. And Agenda Items 48 through 51, Bills Number 2014-16 through 2014-19 will be heard recommending on Tuesday, March 18th, 2014, at 1:00 p.m. At 2048 through 51.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Coffin?
I realize that you're announcing Bill Number 40, the Agenda Item 49, 2014-17. I object to the introduction of the bill as, unfortunately, something that is an incomplete introduction, which probably gives a false sense of the timing involved in this really intensely discussed situation. And I can't vote for the introduction of this bill with a six-month moratorium. So what would be the best thing to do?
We're just reading into the record at this point, not voting on it.
Yes, and it's going to be referred, and a motion will be made to refer. And I will...
There's no motion today, Councilman?
Could we hear from our attorney?
If I could just state, there's no motion today at all even to refer it. These are just by routine read into the record and then referred by the mayor. This particular bill, Item Number 49, will not be referred to a recommending committee, but will instead be heard and considered for adoption by the full city council at the next meeting on March 19. And that will be the opportunity to make any comments or strike it or amend it or anything else.
So the intent would be to bring it to the full council instead of the recommending committee?
The request has been, and it happens from time to time, to have the council as a whole sit as the recommending committee. Since there's redundancy in having the council sit as recommending committee and then a minute later sit as council, we're just going to blend them all together into one hearing.
It will lengthen the length of time of a city council meeting by at least one hour, Your Honor. So if you follow that procedure, understand that, you know, we'll have to have a full hearing, and we can't shortchange people on their positions. And so it could be a very long council meeting if you follow that procedure.
Yes, I just think it really is something that all council need to sit on, hear the entire process all the way through. This is a very important step for the city, and it's very intricate, because the state hasn't really clarified so many things. And so we all need, in my opinion, we all need to be on the same page at the same time rather than going through recommending and just briefings and to come to a quick consensus, which won't happen anyway.
So this action, in Your Honor, does not change the existing moratorium, which will expire on the 17th of March? And we will next consider this, what date, Your Honor?
On the 19th of March.
So there will be two days when we are uncovered by any moratorium. That's the effect of this.
That's correct. It might even be the 14th of March the other one expires, but I know there's a few-day overlap where we're not covered. That's correct.
Okay, just so you're aware, that's the end result of what we're doing.
And Councilman Ross wanted to question something?
Yeah, and I recognize that this is just reading this in, and then we'll go to recommending. I want the public to know that, as well as the press to understand that. And I've read recently in some publications that the city of Las Vegas is putting the brakes on, and I just want to make it clear to the public and to the press that we are not, the staff has been directed to move forward with getting this to where we need to be, to provide the necessary medical services in this community per our state constitution and per the voters of this state in regards to the legalization of medical marijuana. So that being said, I'd like the press certainly to pick up on that, that we are still moving forward, and we're doing it collectively with Clark County. Am I correct, Ms. Redwell?
Yes, sir, you're correct.
That being said, we're moving the train down the tracks. It's just not as quickly as some would like, and I certainly respect and share Councilman Coffin's impatience, because I've just never been a fan of slow bureaucracies getting things done. But we're going to get there, and I want the community to know that, and I want the press to know that. So, thank you, Mayor.
So these are just today being read into the record. So, Mr. Attorney, would you please read into the record?
On behalf of Your Honor, Bill Number 2014-16, in order to extend the boundaries of the city, you prescribe land and landings to make a system of service of laws obligations of the business of the city, provide for other matters, Bill Number 2014-17. In order to declare a moratorium on the application for construction and/or operation of medical marijuana establishments as contemplated by Senate Bill 374 of the 2013 legislative session. Bill Number 2014-18, in order to adopt an updated Symphony Park Design Standards Manual, provide for other matters, and finally, Bill Number 2014-19, in order to amend the downtown Centennial Plan to authorize indoor garden supply, plant, nursery uses within the Arts District, and provide for other matters.
Thank you very much. So Bills 48, 50, 51 will be recommended, will go to recommending, and that's Councilman Barlow, Anthony, and Coffin on the 18th. Item 49, Bill Number 2014-14, will not be referred to a recommending committee, but instead will be heard and considered for adoption by the full city council at its meeting of March 19, 2014.
So we will publish that bill so it's eligible for adoption as a fast track, correct, Brett? I'll publish it as a fast track, so it goes to 319.
It has been published. I understand already it is fast-tracked for adoption on the 19th.
Got it. Perfect.
Thank you. So now we'll move on to Agenda Item 52, EOT 52076, abeyance item, nonconforming use, public hearing applicant-owner Alta Decatur Shopping Center LLC for possible action or request for an extension of time for a nonconforming use tavern at 465 South Decatur Boulevard, C2 General Commercial Zone, Ward 1. Councilwoman Tarkania's staff recommends denial. And this is a public hearing which I declare open as the applicant present.
I am.
And could you introduce yourself, please?
Lucy Stewart, 2500 West Sahara, representing the property owner.
Thank you. Okay, are we having any presentation by Mr. Bowser, Mrs. Ozuna, anybody on this? Guess not. So do you want to go on with this councilwoman? Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on this item? Please come forward. It's a public hearing. Okay. And please state your name. Nope, you're not on. There you go. Nope. There.
No, okay. I didn't even hear anything. It said denial by staff. They're going to explain why the staff wants to deny. It didn't say nothing about planning, it just said staff.
Well, I usually ask Mr. Fag wherever he went. He's gone, there, oh, way down there. Would you please comment on the denial?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. This is a request for an extension of time for a nonconforming tavern that was marked out of business, I believe, in 2009. So this is the fourth request for an extension of time for a nonconforming use, and because it is the fourth request, staff has recommended denial.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on this? I'll close the public hearing. Do you want to make some comments, please?
I would, I would. Thank you so much. And I just wanted to explain, we appeared before you last year because in the past, partly because of the economy, the Becker family had been looking to have a new tenant in this location. Last year, they decided they would just do it themselves. But as you may or may not know, there's been a reorganization with the Becker family and all their holdings. And so they've sort of had to unravel part of their gaming and liquor, and they've been working with the state, and they've been working with your staff. And they've actually, they are now in for their business license, so they'll be moving forward. It's just it's taken a little bit longer, I think, than anticipated.
And what's planned for that facility?
They're going to actually do their own tavern. They're going to open up their own tavern at this location. It's just taken, because they were all tied together, and they've sort of untied some of the properties. And so it's just, it's taken a lot longer to go through all their properties and do their licensing. But I think they have it organized well enough, and that's why they're in for their license at this time.
And the extension of time they're asking for is how long?
Just one year, but I think because they should have their license issued, this should be their last time they'll come back.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman, yours?
Yes, I discussed this with Doug Rankin yesterday, and I also met with Mr. Becker and the attorney that's representing. And because of the situation, the complications involved, I'm recommending that we approve this. But it's the last, it's the last one, and I've explained that to Mr. Becker.
Thank you. There's a motion? There's a motion to approve, actually.
Yes, I said I recommend this. Maybe I should say motion to approve.
Your Honor?
I was just stalling for time.
Oh, you were stalling?
Councilman Beers?
Thank you, Your Honor. I still have a small interest in a CPA firm that leases an office from the Becker Enterprises. And so I have to disclose that. However, I don't think this vote will affect me in any way. That's why I will vote.
Proceed. Okay, there's a motion. Councilman Anthony, Councilman Beers, Councilwoman. Okay, and please post. Well, somebody voted it for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go on to Council Items 53, 54, and 55. 53, GPA 52399, a request for a general plan amendment from DR Desert Rural Density Residential to PF Public Facilities. And Agenda Item 54, ZO and 52401, a request for rezoning from R-E Residence Estates to C-V Civic. And Agenda Item 55, SDR 52099, a request for site development plan review for proposed 4,945 square foot church house of worship with a waiver to allow a nine-foot landscape buffer along a portion of the east perimeter where 15 feet is required. The applicant-owner Church of God Seventh Day, English on 2.0 at 3523 North Jones Boulevard. Staff and planning commission recommend approval of all items, on all items and all items, RE Residence Estate Zone. These items are in Ward 5 with Councilman Barlow and are public hearings which I now declare open. Is the applicant or is representative present?
Yes.
Your name, please, sir?
Jose Hernandez.
And who's the older gentleman with you?
My name is Carlos Man.
Oh, and how old are you? 10?
No, I'm 8.
Ooh, you look very old. Are you representing the gentleman next to you?
Yes.
Good. Wonderful. Okay, Mr. Fag, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a request for a general plan amendment, a rezoning application and a site development plan review application in a residential neighborhood to convert the property to a church use. There's an existing residential structure on the property. They're going to add approximately 3,000 square feet, so the total structure will be approximately 5,000 square feet. This is anticipated to be done in two phases. The first phase you have before you, the second phase would also be required to come forward to a public hearing at a later point in time. Staff and the planning commission have both recommended approval of this request.
And so neighborhood meetings have been held and everything?
Yes, neighborhood meetings were held in accordance with state law.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment here? Please come forward. Make sure your microphone's on.
I would like for us to build a church because that we wouldn't be able to pay rent, because we pay rent over there because we're sharing the church there. And we, instead of paying the rent, we would use that money for material stuff, because there's seven teachers in our class, and some are real teachers that work in third grade, and, yeah.
Good, you're very good. Well done. Do you want to go ahead with the public comment, and we'll go back to the presenter? Thank you.
It's a church, so churches are always good things. It said that staff and planning both recommend approval, so good luck to them.
Anyone else wish to come forward? I'll close the public hearing, but please, any comments you care to make on your project?
I'm okay. I'm in agreement with everything that's been said.
Wonderful. We'll take him. He's going to come up here one day, and I can tell him. Okay, Councilman Barlow, on Agenda Item 53, should we take this one at a time?
Yes, let's take them one at a time, Mayor, because I need to put a number of things on the record and also make sure that the applicant is in agreeance to some of the conditions that I am going to impose as it relates to this application as well. So as far as the GPA is concerned, the, I believe the GPA is in order, so therefore I am going to move to follow staff's and planning commission's recommendation of approval at this time.
Okay, there's a motion. Please vote and please post. In that prior diagram, which is, Mr. Fag said they were going to be done in time, different time lapses, which is already, which is the first one?
I'm going to address that underneath the site plan review.
Okay.
Mayor.
And post, did you post that? And there it is. It passes. Thank you. And now on to agenda item 54.
Okay, as far as the zoning, the zoning is in order as well, so I'm going to move to follow staff's and planning commission's recommendation for approval of this item.
Okay, there's motion. Please vote and please post. And that carries as well. Thank you. Okay, Councilman on 55.
Okay, and on 55, under the site plan review, Mayor, this is where your concern has come in in relation to the surrounding parcels. The surrounding parcels are RE Residential Estates and therefore, there was a neighborhood meeting that was held and we had several members of the, this residential community come out in opposition to this particular use for a number of reasons. One, they have horses. There's still horse property around the site. And so, for that, I want to make sure that, one, the church and its use do not impact the surrounding residents and their horses. So, what I would like to do is, one, add a condition where in Phase Two of their development, that there will be an eight-foot decorative block wall to the north, south, and west perimeter property lines with the appropriate setbacks and landscape as a condition. And in addition to that, Flynn, this is a question that I have for you, and maybe it's already a part of the conditions for the site plan review, and that is the current landscaping and setbacks on this application as it sits before us today, making sure that that, all of the landscaping fronting Jones, which would be the east property line. As far as the ingress and egress, I want you to speak to me in relation to that, as far as how the traffic flows will occur in Phase One as well as Phase Two for the expansion needs, making sure that all traffic, of course, comes out onto Jones and making sure that all of the landscaping is in order moving forward prior to the certificate of occupancy.
Certainly. Madam Mayor, through to you. I'll go ahead and address that question. In terms of the ingress and egress to the church facility, there will only be one driveway provided off of Jones for the Phase One of the development. Phase Two, again, will require a new site plan that will have to come before city council in a public hearing. So, any other ingress or egress to the site would have to be done through a public hearing. In terms of the landscaping, the landscape plan that they have submitted with this application shows that they will landscape the entire Phase One portion of the project, and so, they will have to have that in place prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the addition to the existing structure.
Okay. And in addition to that, as far as the sign package, is making sure that there's no blinking lights or lights that will reflect into the RE Estates properties, making sure that all lights are, fall within the code, of course, but are not impeding as it relates to the surrounding parcels.
Certainly, that is the case with our sign code. There are limitations in terms of the size and the illumination of the signage that they're permitted, and that will be done in accordance with the city's sign code, so...
And was there a requirement for traffic impact study, whether it be for the Phase One or the Phase, the possibility of a Phase Two and how that would impact the residents in this specific neighborhood?
Based on the size of the proposed construction, a traffic study is not required at this point in time. Depending on the size of Phase Two of the project, a traffic study may be required at that point in time.
Okay. And currently, there's what I call chicken wire that surrounds this current property. Will the, are we looking to have the chicken wire remain or should we have that, have the block wall, for example, go in on the north and south side and the west property block wall go in during the Phase Two? Because I know that there's still residential estate properties to the north and the south side of this, of this infill project that we're speaking about today.
In terms of the chicken wire, that's not a permitted fencing material in the city of Las Vegas, and they don't indicate that as part of their site plan as remaining with the site. And so, the chicken wire would not be required. It would be up to city council if you would like to see the perimeter wall constructed with Phase One on the north and south sides of the property. Certainly, you could include that as a condition of approval, but that is not currently shown on their site plan at this point in time, and we wouldn't require it until Phase Two with the additional language that you had mentioned earlier.
Right, because I know that the residents' main concern were their horses. And so, I know as congregations drive onto the property, I want to see how we can buffer, and if we can go to the overhead as far as the site plan, and this is to the mayor's point as well, is there, is there an overhead for, just, yeah, just one moment, just one moment. If we keep going. There we go. That's good. That's, go back to the last one, please. There we go. So, Phase One, Mayor, is, as you can see, half of the property at the top, right across the middle of the line vertically, I'm sorry, horizontally across the middle of the page there is the west property line of Phase One. And, and the Phase Two will be the undeveloped area, which is still plain. What I don't want is for vehicles, for example, to park out in this area, breaking up the undeveloped land, causing dust, because there's horses on the north, south, and west side of this parcel. And I know, once we approve things and we approve them in good faith, once the patrons start to come into this area, a lot of times, they start to park inside of the undeveloped area, and I don't want that to occur. So, I would like to have some type of berm, a temporary berm, whatever the case may be, to keep, to keep that undeveloped and restricted from the ability to, to have vehicles cause a lot of dust and breaking up the, the undeveloped land back there. So, that would be my concern because of the horses, and that's a major concern for, for those residents. I want to make sure that they have a buffer in place. So, how can you help me through that?
In terms of the design of the property with the parking lot in its current configuration, they would be required to have curbing along the back row of the parking lot. And then, you'll also notice from the site plan that they do have landscaping separating the parking lot from the Phase Two or the unimproved area of the site. So, it's unlikely that they would have cars that would drive up over the curb and on to the unimproved area. But what we might do, just as a protective measure, we might place a condition of approval that says no temporary parking shall be permitted on the Phase Two portion of the property.
I would like that placed as a, as a condition as well. And what about also the block on the north and the west side to the west line of their Phase One? Do you understand my question?
Yes, basically doing a block wall in between Phase One and Phase Two.
Correct.
I would recommend against that just because they would have to take that down when they start with the Phase Two construction, so there kind of leaves...
Why would you, why would you have to take down the block?
Because if you're putting it across the middle of the site...
No, 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 no. I said the north and the south.
Oh, the north and the south, okay. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I thought you said west. On the north and the south, no, that wouldn't be an issue from a development's point of view.
Okay, and because I, what I'm trying to do is just create a nice buffer between making sure that the residents are, have a level of protection in their horses. I don't want that to be affected because I, as I understand it, and maybe Councilman Ross can jump in and help me out as well when it comes to horses and how temperamental they can be, I want to make sure that we provide the church with what they're looking for, but at the same, same time, making sure that we have a nice, good relationship between your adjacent neighbors who have been there for many, many years versus yourself who is just now moving into the community. So, I want to make sure that we have a, a nice introduction as this new development comes into the community, which is much needed because the current house there, and I know Councilman Ross represented this area prior to myself, hasn't been sitting there for quite some time. Would be fair to say, Councilman? And so, having some new activity coming to the area, specifically as it fronts Jones, I believe that we, we have an opportunity to, you know, start to reactivate some of the dormant parcels due to whatever reason it's dormant, you know, having the ability to reactivate some of these dilapidated structures. And so, I welcome the proposal of the church coming in, but I want to make sure that our residents are protected at the same time as this new type of change coming to residential estates and rural communities. So, so my question still stands in regards to the, the block during the Phase One, meaning the north, south, just to the west perimeter of Phase One.
And certainly, that's something that would be appropriate for council to place on this site plan as a condition of approval.
Okay.
And Councilman Ross would like to make comment too, and then our applicant would like to respond to you.
This way.
Thank you, Mayor. And just to back you up, Councilman Barlow, you know, I think Jones is a hundred, hundred, hundred-foot right-of-way. I'm looking at a hundred-foot right-of-way. And the significance of that is that the nature of these RE parcels along Jones is in a changing phase, phasing out the ranch estates. Now, granted, to the west of this property is a county island and lots of ranch estates properties with horses. And Councilman Barlow, to answer your question about the horses, most folks who have horses in the city of Las Vegas have them well acquainted with noise, traffic, and people, unless you're in, you're just breaking a new, a new, a new fall or you're, you know, you're in that process of getting a horse that's been on range and you're, you're now introducing it to the social world. But most folks, especially in this older area that have been established there for many years, have, their horses are well-acclimated to the, the sounds of traffic, the sounds of the city, the sounds of kids, the sounds of fireworks, for that matter. We call that bomb-proof. And we like a horse that's bomb-proof because it doesn't matter what happens around you, you can still stay on the saddle and, and on that horse. But I've actually encouraged, Councilman Barlow, I side with you. Several years ago, I was approached with the corner parcel there at Jones and Galwin to build a church as well. But I think this is much needed and a good addition to that area to bring some vitality back to that, to that area of the city. So, I'm going to support you, Councilman, in your decision.
And then, is there, may we hear, and Councilman Coffin also wants to add, but the gentleman would like to make comment?
Thanks, Your Honor. I've been waiting for an answer on, for some time, and I don't know where it's kind of stopped, but when we did adopt the ordinances, that kind of left the horse he said alone in the northern part of the valley. We, we kind of disarmed those in the central part, in the southern part of our city, so there is this stuff. We adopted an ordinance, but there are unintended consequences of who can have horses. You can have them now, but if you sell your home, you, you lose it. And I don't think we intended to do all of that. As I say, I'm still waiting for a response. I don't know where my staff is on that. I trust that they have conveyed it to somebody, so I'm anxiously awaiting an answer.
Madam Mayor, if I might, that's an important thing for us too because we have horse owners.
You're grandfathered in.
They're grandfathered in, but the way we're doing it now, there are some problems, and Flynn's trying to work a way through it, but it would be good to go through that.
Okay, Councilman Barlow, now, can we hear from him, please? Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would have, under normal circumstances, no objection to putting a block wall as part of Phase One on the east side and, excuse me, on the north and south, except that it wouldn't make any sense to do it at this stage because on the south side, there's another two acres of vacant land that nobody's utilizing for anything. There's no houses, no people, anything. And, and on the, so it would be just like a, it would be a, a block wall kind of in an island by itself because there's, it's really not holding anything back. It's not, it's not really becoming a barrier to anything. And on the north side, that, that block wall that would be incorporated as part of Phase One would be next to another empty land, which is that land that would have been built as another church that Councilman Ross was talking about. And so, that's empty land as well, and there's nothing there. And we are actually hoping that, I'm sorry. Yeah, we were actually hoping, actually, that the time would come when we would be able to purchase that parcel as well for additional parking. And so, to put a, a block wall in that part, we would have to take it out again. It would be the same thing as having the block wall in the, in the west side of the land.
So, what, your comments, Mayor, Councilman, on that particular block wall that he says, you know, there's no point?
The gentleman makes a good point. He makes a good point, but my main concern is the chicken wire. That with your new development coming in, there has to be something more aesthetically pleasing than the chicken wire that's currently there. I'm not going to allow for the development to go in and the chicken wire remain because, number one, it's not going to look good up against your new development. So, what are your plans in relation to making sure that your perimeter property line looks attractive? What is it that, I'll give you an opportunity to give me a proposal. How about that?
Yes.
What do you propose?
I propose...
Outside of a chicken coop.
Okay.
Because Councilman Ross wants a chicken coop.
Does he like chickens?
He likes chickens. I don't know. He's been called a chicken a couple times.
Chickens go really good to the horses. No, I, I propose that initially, as we build the, the Phase One, that, see, what happens is the Phase One is not going to really add a lot of structure. All it is, is we're going to remodel the first building and that.
I get that, I get that. But my point is, as new development comes in, we, we as a city have to make sure, as new development comes in, specifically in areas that have lacked development for quite some time, we want to make sure that as your Phase One come online, we're proud to celebrate your Phase One versus you doing half of a Phase One because you expand the building, but you don't do anything else. People have come before and said, we, we want to expand the building and bring new development in, but we want a variance on all of the landscaping, the parking, and no perimeter block wall or fencing. I mean, that's not going to happen on Jones as we bring new development in. So, I'm giving you an opportunity to give me a proposal as to what your plans are to, in your Phase One, as it relates to your north and your southbound property line.
So, the, the issue on the north, I don't know if you heard that part of it, the issue on the north side, what happened is that, that parcel, this one acre that's adjacent to us, we actually are working on hoping to buy, purchase that parcel and annex that to the rest of what we have.
But as, sir, as of right now, we're only talking about the property that you do have control over.
Right.
Okay, so, the future, whether it be Phase Two going west of your property or Phase Three, the possibility of you purchasing, purchasing the property to the north is not a part of the conversation as of right now. Let's stick to Phase One and how you're going to address from a landscaping and buffering of Phase One, making sure that the chicken wire goes away. So, what do you want to propose to me today to help me with that, to move me off of my idea of a block wall, decorative block wall?
Okay. Would you consider that, because of the financing is going to be an issue, so that's why we're doing it in two phases, would you consider us doing the Phase One with everything we have without the block wall, and then within 12 months after we complete, after we get the certificate of occupancy, then we would have to do the block wall? That gives us time then to figure out how we're going to do that side of the north side and not have to waste money building a block wall that we're going to have to tear up.
So, let me ask you this question. Let me ask you this. When you do Phase Two, what are your plans for perimeter block wall at that point?
Then, we're going, at that point, we're going to do the perimeter of the block wall first and get everything done because we're going to then build a bigger building there in Phase Two. And we're actually planning on, if we, if we're able to buy that parcel, then we'll keep that first phase if we don't...
Remain focused. Let's just stay on the parcel at hand, okay?
Yeah, you asked me about Phase Two, so I'm saying on Phase Two.
Well, Phase Two is to the west.
Right. So, you asked me, what is, what are our plans going to be when we do Phase Two?
Okay.
And at that point in time, we do want to put the perimeter of the block wall all the way at one time because then it will affect the people in the back, which are on the west side, that are, they have the issue with the horses. Right now, on both the north and south side, there is an issue with the horses.
Well, let me just share this with you. You're going to be my neighbor.
Oh, good.
Okay? Does that help you out?
Yes.
Does that help you out?
Yes.
Okay. So, you're not telling me anything about this property that I don't already know?
Okay.
Okay? So, go ahead and continue.
So, I'm asking, would you, would you consider that we could put that block wall a year after where we have everything else done? Would that be something that you would be willing to consider?
Yes, it is something that I'll consider.
Okay, I would, we would accept that. And then, and then on the south, and because there is no, there's nothing else there, would you consider that we can put that block wall when we're doing, when we come back to do Phase Two so that we can connect all the walls together?
Which one?
The one on the south end? Because the, the Phase One, as you know, is just that very front portion of the land. And so, on the south, there is, there's no development on the south at all. It's just empty land. And so, we probably, at this stage, would finish our subdivision, I mean, our development, and there'd be no, there'd be no buffer at this point between those two properties.
Quick comment, Mayor? Quick comment, Mayor?
Yes, please.
If I may, maybe just plant a seed in Councilman Barlow's mind.
He just didn't want the chicken wire.
Well, I understand it.
Okay, so this is, this is what I'm going to do. Being that you, well, being that you have the landscape buffers, because my concern is that the chicken wire has to go, right? And I'm pretty sure you want it to go as well. Hopefully you do.
Yeah.
And so with the landscape buffers in place, what I'm going to ask is that we spruce up the landscape buffers on the north and the south property lines of Phase One. And in Phase Two, the condition will be for a block wall on the north, south, and west side of your property line. How about that?
That's perfect.
So can you give me more landscaping on the north and south side?
I'll do that, that makes more sense.
Okay, there you go. Councilman Ross. Through you, Mayor. Thank you.
I, I was only going to suggest that if there's a parking issue, people parking in the dirt, and that's your big concern, is I know on parcels where we have vagrants floating around, or we have a lot of trash being dumped there, or that sort of thing, we just have the property owner chain-link that with a six-foot chain-link fence. Is that what you're referring to as the chicken wire?
No, if we go to the, go to the overhead, if you can go back to the overhead, you'll see what I'm talking about here, Councilman. Take us to the overhead, please.
Because that's, that was just going to be my recommendation.
No, I'm saying it's real chicken wire.
They're not coming out of pocket with a whole lot of money to build block walls they may tear down, and it's a much less expensive alternative to keeping people from parking on the, on the dirt lots.
Go to the next slide, there's a depiction of, of what I'm referencing. I believe it should be.
There's a big picture there.
Keep going.
There you go.
Okay, there.
Okay, not there.
Now, we got four-foot chain-link right there.
Yeah, that's, that's chain-link, go, go to the next one.
Here's the chicken wire, you talking about this wire?
Yeah, this is, there, on the right.
Okay.
And see if there's another one in aerial. Is there another one beyond that? There it is.
Yeah.
That, that's the chicken wire that I'm referencing.
Yeah, I understand.
And also by code, this is not allowed by code, so it would have to go anyway during Phase One.
It would. But if there's a problem, like I said, with his parishioners or his folks attending the church parking on that lot, it's much less expensive for him to erect a temporary chain-link fence that is approved through our, through our code that allows him to do that. That way, he's not having to tear down a center, a block wall. I'm just throwing that at you, Councilman, for consideration, and I'm only going to support your motion if there's a chicken coop in it.
Well, I, well, I guess, well, I guess you're, I guess I'm one down on the vote at this point.
Councilman Beers.
So I have to bank on my other colleagues.
I know we're in trouble, Councilman Beers, keep coming.
That chicken wire is going to be gone, because that's going to be where the parking lot's going to be, so it'll be gone anyways.
Go ahead, Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I, I don't know if we can get back to a picture of the front, but marigolds or azaleas? No, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. But I, you know, if the goal is to reduce the creation of dust for horses in the area, this chicken wire we see in the lower right-hand corner keeps people, keeps people from parking to the north of this parcel, on the dirt. There is no such barrier to the south of the parcel. And perhaps figuring out along Councilman Ross's line, how to fence that parcel to the south would get you around the creation of dust for the horses problem. If we're going to make the parcel owner spend money on a block wall, perhaps we can have the comparable amount of money spent on fencing for the lot to the south.
Landscaping would work.
Right, that's, that was my reason and rationale for asking him to increase the landscaping buffer on the north and the south side, to reduce the chances of anyone driving across your landscaping to get into the other parcels on the north and the south side that you are so, you are also concerned about, right?
Right, I agree. And that, that chicken wire, by the way, is in the middle of the property anyway, so it's going to have, it's going to go regardless, because they had to put a, a chicken wire there in between, like, the whole parcel, it's right, running right in the middle of the property. It looks like it's at the end of the property, but really, it's in the middle.
Okay, so Flynn, the increase of landscaping, now, what are we talking about as far as a specific box, or?
What I would recommend that we do is, as an added condition, we say something to the effect that a revised landscape plan shall be submitted to the Department of Planning for Review and Approval, showing increased landscape materials in both the north and the south landscape buffer areas. So essentially, we have something that requires additional trees and shrubs within those areas.
To protect the north and the south property.
Correct.
And you agree to that, sir?
That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, so that's one condition, and the second condition will be?
Okay, let, there would be three added conditions based on our discussion here today. The first one is that future development phases shall require an eight-foot decorative block wall with 20% contrasting material along the north, south, and west property lines.
And you agree with that, sir?
I do have a question. On the decorativeness of the block wall, the decorativeness would be in the, the facing our property, not facing the property behind it?
Correct. Well, it's on both sides of your wall.
So it'd have to be decorative on both sides?
Correct. It has to be decorative on the sides that are visible.
So the, so the neighbors that would be on the back of it would have a decorative portion of it as well?
Correct. And you can do that through varying your block material, so that if you have some type of block material that has a decorative face to it, that qualifies as the contrasting material.
And what a number of people do, they basically flip-flop them. So it's staggered. So you have some facing you, some facing your neighbors, so it's just a matter of just turning the block.
That makes sense.
Not that I know too much about construction. Or masonry work.
So the condition for the block wall will be the first added condition. The second added condition is that no temporary parking shall be permitted on the Phase Two portion of the site. And then the third condition would be a revised landscape plan shall be submitted to the Department of Planning for Review and Approval, showing increased landscape materials in both the north and south buffer areas.
And you agree with that, sir?
Yes, that makes sense.
What is your name, tell me your name, here?
Jose Hernandez.
Jose Hernandez, thank you, Mr. Hernandez. And is this your son?
No, it's not. This is just one of the young guys that goes to our church.
Oh, really?
He does, he actually speaks once in a while, and he's really good, and so he wanted to come, he offered to come and speak. But if we can get some chickens in the property with the, you know, he might like it even better when we go there, so he can get fresh eggs.
Now, now, if you don't mind having him speak, he needs to say his name for the record.
My name is Carlos, and my last name is Ayala.
Carlos Ayala, what a pleasure to have you, Carlos, thank you so very much. Carlos, would you like for me to approve this item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'll follow Carlos Ayala's recommendation for approval, subject to all conditions at this time, Mayor and Council.
With a chicken coop.
And, and please know that Councilman Ross, for the record, will not be voting on this, Carlos. So maybe you can convince him to vote.
He already did vote, now don't do that. You've had good representation. There's a motion that has been voted on, please vote, post. And you did a very good job.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Look at that, look at that, all the votes, you got every one of them.
Thank you very, very much, I really appreciate it.
Good luck to you, thank you. Okay, we have to pull back to Agenda Item 52, if you wouldn't mind, because we have an addendum to that or a removal, and that's Councilman Beers.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we rescind our vote on Item Number 52 after additional consultation with the city attorney. Out of an abundance of caution, he believes that I should not vote on that matter, so I'd like to recall it, have another vote, and which I will abstain.
Okay, so there's a motion to rescind Agenda Item 52, please. Okay, this is a motion to rescind 52, please. And then whose motion was this originally? Councilman Barlow? Councilwoman, would you like to make it again, so then Councilman Beers can make his statement?
I move to approve Item Number 52.
Okay, Councilman Beers, do you want to make your declaration again?
Thank you, Your Honor. I retain a minority interest in a CPA firm that has an office that is rented from Becker Enterprises, although I don't, I don't believe I will benefit in any way. Council's advised that out of an abundance of caution, I not vote on the matter, so I will be abstaining.
Councilwoman, you did make a motion, and so there it is. So everybody except for Councilman Beers, who will abstain, please vote and please post.
Your Honor, while you're waiting for the vote, if I could just put on the record real quickly that I reserve the right in the future to, to change that advice. Quite technically, the councilman has a private business relationship in his private capacity with an applicant. It is very, very attenuated, so it is out of an abundance of caution that I'm giving the advice to abstain, because it technically meets the definition under state law. But I do intend to explore this with the Director of State Ethics and see if she has a different opinion, and if so, I reserve to give different advice in the future.
Wonderful, we like to err on the side of caution. Thank you very much. Okay, we will now move on to Agenda Item 56. I instruct the city clerk to set public hearing dates and appeals from the City Planning Commission meetings and dangerous building or nuisance letter abatements. Citizen participation, public comments during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. Anyone who wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please state your name.
Mayor, my name is Anthony Hodges. One of the subjects we had today was about traffic, lights, far as the emergency vehicles. Intersections, they do, fire department and all them do have some sort of clicker thing where they can change the lights. But see, the way things are going nowadays, I, not just young people, but you got people playing loud music, windows are up, you know what I'm saying, and the music's so loud, I'd rather stand out at the airport behind the big jets taking off, it's that loud, you know? It's beyond deafening, whatever, because I got a grandson, he's into that, whatever. So all I'm saying is that some things, it's caused by a lack of proper respect on human behavior. You know, people just do things, ain't thinking about nothing but themselves, and really have no regard for even their own safety. So therefore, not only they're putting theirself in risk, you know, they're putting everybody else in too. But the word intersection by itself is a pretty challenging word, you know, that's why they call it an intersection. On a clear day, they put two vehicles out there, trust me, and they can run into each other, on a clear day. Ain't nobody out there but them, you know? It's kind of like old, like Maude May used to say years ago, no red light ever, ever hit anybody, you don't fall out of the pole hitting nobody, cars hit people. So what I'm saying is that the intersection is a problem, and it's going to always have a certain amount of, he used to be, you know, a policeman, whatever. The objective is that, that's why they call it an intersection, that certain things occur there occasionally, or as time go on, you know? You will have some sort of catastrophe in that intersection. So, but for the emergency vehicles in the city, first doing a rush hour and everybody going, you know, depending on the time of day, sometimes during the day, ain't nothing out there but nothing, vehicles just gone by their business. But then during the rush hour, everybody comes from both directions, those intersections are heavily crowded, and, and the emergency vehicle had to go through, they're kind of holding on and praying that they make it, you know what I'm trying to say? Because of the people, like I said, who drive, not, texting all, they ain't got nothing to do with, you just got people got the windows rolled up, and loud news and so on, so they just, they're just not in it. And so these are the things that we had to cross our fingers. Anybody drive an emergency vehicle, they pray to itself through the intersection, so that's all I'm trying to say, is that some things are not idiot or foolproof. Some things just going, you know, happen from time to time. Let's get back to intersections again, okay, I mean, crosswalks and stuff. What we think is happening today, boulevards are scheduled for 45 miles an hour, avenues are for 35 miles an hour, residents are for 25 miles an hour, period. Okay, so if, if most of your boulevards are 45 miles an hour, and people run out, try to run across, see, cars traveling at 50 miles an hour, or whatever, or greater, and you can be 1,500 feet down the street, they can get on you in a hurry, see? So that's why the people don't quite understand that traffic.
Thank you.
Traffic problems, pedestrians really got to look out for themselves.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry about that, and have a good day, thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident, have a mailing address, appeal box 466-89125. I'm here today to address the problem with these programs. I've been coming before you all, I don't mean to tie you all's time up, I think it's very important that the people, the citizens here cooperate with law enforcement, and it won't take a long time to get a problem under control. And I've called Nellis Air Force Base, I've worked with the politicians, tried to cooperate with law enforcement, because not only for my protection, but every citizen. The drug trafficking is out of control. When someone is victimized continually, and they're angry, and maybe I'm not the most popular person, I'm not out to win a popularity contest. Sometimes when you take a stand for what's right, that's more important than being popular. So if people don't like me, that's quite all right. I cannot afford to sit back and let people sell drugs at my expense and feed them off of me. And I want the people on the military base, I've given up on calling out there to understand something. This, this is a society we live in, and there are rules everyone must play by. And if they don't want to play by the right rules, they in the wrong society, maybe they need to get on a spaceship and head to the moon. Because nobody wants to be victimized and have to pay for their own victimization. Nobody want people selling drugs over them, getting rich, and then I have to sit back and, and take everything off of them, insults and everything else, because they want to sell drugs and get rich and have their way, and get high off some kind of drug that's not even legal in the United States. And they want to call themselves drug lords? The only lord I know is Jesus Christ, I don't know them, they're dressing themselves as lords, but that's okay. They can't do it at my expense, that's all I'm telling them. And I want them to discontinue using my distress signal, and the ones that's angering me, I heard somebody say, well, I can't use her no more, so I don't care what happens to her. That's okay, I still love them, you know? I don't hate them, but I don't care about them using me. And I'm glad, if they don't like me, that's okay, I'm glad they decided not to use me, because the only reason they, I won't say, you know, they want, they don't want me out on Nellis, because I won't have to come in here and complain. But I have some cooperation with everybody concerned, and they'll think I'm Lord, but I don't want to be Lord, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please come forward, state your name.
My name is Veronica Lawrence, I'm a paramedic with AMR, and thank you all for your time today. I just had a quick question that I wanted to ask Councilman Beers. If you, are you a doctor, or a nurse, or a paramedic? And do you in any way, shape, or form work in the EMS system?
Nope.
Okay, then I think it's fair to say that your analogy that you presented, excuse me, earlier, is actually quite offensive to anyone who does work in the EMS system, because we're not doctors, and we're not nurses, but a nurse is certainly not beneath a doctor. And it actually takes a team to work in the emergency system, not just doctors, not just nurses, and not just paramedics. So with that being said, we're all trained as paramedics, not only in the fire department, but in private ambulance, and we're all expected to maintain a certain license and certain certifications. We have an abundance of, you know, continuing education that we can do to better ourselves, individuals, and as companies, but nobody is beneath anybody out there. And that's, with that being said, then I'd like to address everybody else in saying that if you really want to know how everything works, then like my, my other Barbara Larson said, go out there, go out, talk to the paramedics, not only with private ambulance, but with the fire also, because it's us that's running the calls. It's us that's out with the community and with patients. And if you asked every single one of us that's actually running those calls, we do care about the patient, we do care about the community, we do care about the public, because that's why we do this job. Lord knows, we don't make a million dollars, but we do it because that's what we care about, and that's what we're passionate about. And I would ask all of you to consider that this system is not broken. It is not broken. We're not at AMR causing the city to have to pay any money, right? We're not, we're not costing you anything, and there's a majority of us that we're a benefit, we are a benefit. We get up every day, and we go and we run those calls for the patients, for the public, We get up every day, and we go and we run those calls for the patients, for the public, not for anything else but that. And so I would ask you that, don't revamp the system, fix whatever you think is wrong, because every single one of us that are actually running the calls, we're a team. We are a team. We work together as a team, we respond to those calls as a team, we take care of those patients as a team, we all look out for each other as a team. It doesn't matter what uniform we're putting on, we are a team out there.
Thank you. And we appreciate it. We appreciate what you do and your responses, because you responded to my son. So we thank you very much, and we, I think several of us have not maybe spent 12 hours a day, but certainly are aware, and I've spent a great deal of time with your former CEO, and so I think there's an understanding here.
And the other thing too is our administrators-
But thank you for staying all day to get to this point. Appreciate it.
Our administrators are, they're dressed in their uniforms. So when the system is low, and they need to be out there running 911 calls, they do. They do. It's what we do as, as a group.
Thank you.
And I would ask you to at least consider that.
We appreciate your work. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could I just ask her a question? Previously, one of your members had suggested doing a 12-hour shift with you. Is that how many hours you work a day? I mean, is that, do you all do it in 12-hour shifts?
We do. We do 12-hour shifts. There are 8-hour shifts available, and I don't recommend that you go out there for 12 hours, because you'll be exhausted.
Do you think 6 hours or 4 hours would do it? I'm just thinking, I'd like to do it, but I can't find 12 hours.
Sure. No, and you know what I think would be even more beneficial? Just go around and talk to the people.
But I, this I have done, well, I have done to patients, and I have done with some of yours.
Well, you know AMR just left your locale there on Martin Luther King, right next to the Presbyterian Church, who've moved to the southwest for now.
Because of Neon, I believe.
I would, I would ask that you go talk to people like myself that work in private ambulance, but go talk to the firefighters, you guys.
But you know, I think you have the impression that we don't think that you do a good job, or that we don't think you care. I will tell you, I know we believe you care.
No, I don't. And I don't have any impression at all, and I'm not here to throw stones in any way, because I'm going to do my job, no matter what happens. But what I am asking is that those of us that actually do go out and work in this system, the day-to-day system, maybe, you know, not the administrators who have a different perspective on it, those of us that are actually running the calls and taking care of the patients, that's why we're here, and our system's not broken. We are still united, we're still working together as a team, we're still responding to those calls and taking care of the patients. And that's all that I ask, is that you would keep that in mind. And it's not, it isn't always about the money, because we're not, we're not costing any money.
Thank you. We don't think it's about the money either. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Be sure to say your name, sir, please.
Yes, good afternoon, distinguished mayors, councilmembers. My name's Mr. Rosary, Tower 1 at Turnberry Place. I'm going to be addressing a few of the councilmembers today, mainly on the right side here. I notice they're all kind of bunched together, the three I'm interested in, although I will make a comment to Councilman Anthony, being a private captain with the Metro Police Department-
And you do know you live in the county.
Excuse me?
You live in the county if you're in-
I have properties in the county, city, all over the town, but I-
Your residence, I mean.
Resident of the county currently.
Is in the county, right. South of, you're south of Sahara.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Basically, I, I hope that doesn't, I know I used to do it the-
It's all right, we won't throw stones at you.
Yeah, because we have county member, county residents and city members that come downtown. That's my big concern here, is your downtown area, and they all like to frequent the downtown, so I don't think we want to discriminate against any of them. Sorry a little bit for my appearance, I'm like Bob Beers, a CPA, financial planner, and this is my busy time of year, 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. If I'm lucky, I see the outside with tax season today. So that's why I'm in the position I'm in today. I'm looking forward to meeting with Councilman Barlow tomorrow at his coffee, and I had an event that I was hoping to be able to come to tomorrow also with Councilman Coffin, but they kind of overlap each other, your gang meeting tomorrow morning, and I'm finding out a little more information on that. But my issues relate mainly to the marijuana issue, which I want to address Councilman Anthony on, being that he's in the position that he used to be. I'm real concerned with our Washington, and also the state of Colorado now, with their marijuana issues. And I just want to hope that you all have some public meetings, and really focus on the issues that relate to and are created by the authorization and use of marijuana in a community. There's a lot of effects by it, it's not just a financial one, which I know that myself and Mr. Beers look at mainly are the bottom lines for all these issues, but there's personal issues, children, kids-
And this bill will be heard on March 19th by the full council.
I'm really hoping that we focus real heavily on that one. Another issue I want to bring to your attention is the panhandlers in this town. I have all sorts of clients that bring to my attention regularly, and Councilwoman Tartanian's area, they stand on freeways, they walk in between cars, they panhandle, they have signs, homeless, need help, anything, people handing them dollar bills, coins. We're getting into a situation down here on Fremont Street where they sit in wheelchairs. I sat out there one night till 2:00 a.m. in the morning behind the Fremont. They sit in these wheelchairs with these signs, and then all of a sudden, I watched them leave at about 2:00 a.m. in the morning. They kind of wheel their wheelchair behind these hotels, they stand up, they fold up their wheelchair, and they stick it in a nice $80,000 Lexus, and drive away with having made $200 off our tourists, bothering the public. It's getting out of hand, and we really need to do something with our metro. I spent my night last night at a First Tuesday, Captain Fletcher, out in the northeast area. We're all aware of the problems. I wish we could get our $400,000 back from the air, air, helicopter ride we gave to a celebrity recently. But that's mainly, I'm concerned about the downtown area, the zip line's going to be opening soon, as you know. We've got a container park, which I'm in disagreement on, the comments I've heard as being positive, I think it's more of a nuisance. We're bringing kids into the areas, a lot of children, family oriented, we got away from that. I've been out here 40 years now, and we left MGM with the Adventure Land, we got rid of Wet and Wild, we're Turnberry now that I live, Tower 1 was built. So I'll deal with the downtown councilmembers, I hope I can maybe meet with them personally, maybe bring some of these issues to their attention, and try to work out a deal where all of us can work together and get back to where we were, maybe back 2006, '07, before the housing market crash, which I'm well aware of. Me and Councilman Beers deal with the foreclosures every day. But I just hope we can maybe have a few meetings. I'm trying to reach Councilman Barlow's representatives, Councilman Coffin, I met his gentleman just a few minutes ago, and I think we all have good input. I noticed a lot of the same county representatives, employees, or city employees, very good ones, Mr. Fag, Betty. So I'll hope to work with all of you, and I look forward to meeting Councilman Barlow tomorrow morning, and Councilman Coffin will have a nice cup of coffee.
We thank you very much, and just to remind you, First Amendment rights, we have been working with this issue for the last umpteen years, about panhandle, everything. So, you know, it is something we are working on, and as you speak with the different council persons, I'm sure. So get some sleep and prepare for this month and next.
I understand the ACLU, they're, you know what?
Thank you. The issues you mentioned, we're there.
The carts, the little flip carts, remember that one? Yeah, okay, I appreciate all your time.
But we appreciate that you come up and speak to us, because they are what we're about. Thank you.
Thank you.
And your name, please.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Timothy Otto, 4201-
We just need your name, it's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, council, councilmen and delegates. I'm here just to address, just for, I'm sure I'm definitely missed on the agenda, I'm not sure if it's 65, has to do with the medical cannabis. I just wanted to say I do respect everyone's opinion, and it's, as far as, it has been quite a while, and, you know, I just wanted to say that we would basically appreciate whichever effort that you, that everyone is basically taking towards this, this specific issue, because there are medical patients in this community that basically still do not have access to, you know, with their medication. And believe it or not, and we, as, as much as it is very, very uncomfortable for some of, some of us patients, we have to travel to different states, just so we could basically acquire the same type of medications in which we could basically get here. And, and once again, we're not in a hurry. The right thing must, must be done, and then I, I basically do agree that we, if, and I do respect the, the meetings that's coming up on the, on the 19th, and I, I really hope that we all take this matters very seriously into our heart, there's a lot of people that are affected with this personally, and it's just not something that we all just ought to just basically dismiss. And if anyone really wants any specific reference, there's a lot of researchers currently even going on, this year there's going to be, is there an overhead? I may use, please.
I'm not sure if you just put it up there, just put it right in the middle of the plate, right there. Actually, show it.
Yes, ma'am.
There you are.
Thank you. It's, it's, it's just a quick, just to inform that there is actually a group of, you know, physicians and doctors all around the world that basically taken part of the cannabinoid research, they're part of the cannabinoid research institute society, in which they have pretty much different locations in which they agree, they basically meet up yearly. And these physicians and medical doctors in their fields have contributed to a lot of these clinical trials. We have posted that out currently on popmed.gov for any, anyone who basically is interested in basically advancing their interest into the research of the cannabinoid, so I just wanted to basically share that.
We appreciate that. Our legal and our staff are all working on it, because that's, you're exactly on where we want to be. We want to be doing the right thing, we want the background, we want to make sure it's correct, but we also don't want to commit felonies by doing it. So we're in a situation where the state has issued certain directives, they're not clear yet, there's legislative pieces that have to be sifted through. So you'll come back on the 19th, and you'll hear the rest of the conversation. That's why I asked to be brought in front of the full council, and not just to one group, so everybody can be part of this. I think it will take us probably all day, if not more than all day. So you're welcome to come back at that time, and we appreciate your concern, and I think our members certainly have a lot of research they've been doing individually. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Councilman and woman. Thanks for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? I will then close the public hearing, and we'll move on to Agenda Item 58, Councilmember recognition. Comments made by the individual city councilmembers during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the city council unless that subject's on the agenda and scheduled for action. We will start at my immediate left, Councilwoman Tartanian, and we'll go to the left, and then we'll go to the right.
Well, our puppy love event got rained out.
Oh, so you rescheduled?
So we will reschedule. We haven't rescheduled yet, but I wanted to let everybody know, it's not forgotten, we will do it. And then secondly, I wanted to say that along with the great Councilman Bob Beers, we will be sharing a document shredding event on Saturday, May 3rd, 10:00 a.m. to noon, at All American Park, Buffalo Drive and Oaky Boulevard.
How many boxes per person?
It says limit five boxes or bundles per car, no staples or clips. We sort of maneuver a little and take an extra box if you have it.
With staples?
With staples, yes. We, we do that. We know it's difficult, we just want to help out. Lastly, I wanted to mention that we are working very closely in Ward 1 with the local care foundation, and with the remote area medical group, they're having a remote area medical event in southern Nevada, and I think this is very important, because it will not just be for Ward 1 residents, it will be for all the wards, in fact, it will be for all of the southern Nevada area. Free medical help will be given to hundreds of patients per day, April 5th and 6th, at Bonanza High School, which is 6665 Delray Avenue. RAM is an international organization that travels the country and throughout the world, providing free medical services with no qualification. That means you do not have to have any money, you do not have to have any ID, you just need to show up, and we have many families that need help medically, that have no way to get help otherwise. This is, the event is for those in southern Nevada who are uninsured or underinsured, and you will have, as I mentioned, no eligibility requirements, no ID necessary, medical services are provided on a first-come, first-served basis. And I'm going to do this a few times before that April date, because it's so important to know that people in other places in the United States where this has been held, have come and, well, they've come 6 o'clock the night before, in state in line for this. Now let me tell you some of the medical help. You can have, you will have dental care, which will include, of course, checking, and it will include any fillings that are needed, it also will include, unless they change it, root canal work. As far as vision is concerned, your vision will be checked, and you also will have the probability of being provided glasses, according to whatever the prescription is needed, because we will have the people there who are the experts. RAM brings to the area that's being involved, which of course is southern Nevada, a lot of equipment that they bring in big trucks, we've gone through all of it to set it up at Bonanza. And then we, they also have many of the doctors who come, but we ask, because of the scale of this event, many volunteers are needed, so if you are able to help, if you're a doctor or a nurse or a paramedic, a dentist or a neurosurgeon, all of those, OB, GYN, if you can, please give us a call at 701-9135. I think this is a marvelous thing to have, and I want to tell you, that both of these, they're having two of these events in Nevada, both of them were scheduled in northern Nevada. Because of our care group, they fought to have one in southern Nevada, because we needed one too. So I hope that we'll have a lot of people there who need this type of help, they'll give the glasses free, and all the examinations free, the dental work free, and any other medical work that's needed. And of course, it's going to be sanitary conditions, and it'll be with the right equipment, and it will be with doctors who are fully certified.
Thank you. Councilman Barlow?
Thank you, Mayor. Starting off Coffee with the Councilmen, I host this event the first Thursday of every month, and so please come out to 751 Rancho Road, right at Bonanza. I'll be there from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and enjoying in conversation with the constituents and the business owners of Ward 5, or just folks that want to come out just to sit with me for that hour, and just talk about what's going on locally, as well as nationally. So please come out tomorrow, or the first Thursday of every month, at Coffee with the Councilmen, at Starbucks. In addition to that, of course, we have our monthly bluegrass in the park at Lorenzi. The next one will take place on Sunday, April 6th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m. So come on out to enjoy music from local bluegrass bands, playing the traditional American music with banjos, fiddles, guitars, and mandolins. So please enjoy this very festive event in the park at Lorenzi, the first Sunday of every month. And of course, you can always follow your councilmen on Facebook and Twitter, so please continue to remain in contact with my office, and I look forward to answering any questions or concerns that the community may have. Thank you.
Thank you. And on to you, Councilman Coffin.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. One of our final speakers today from the public made reference to tomorrow morning's activities. So Thursday, March 6th, is a very important conference here in our chambers, starting at 8 o'clock to 11 o'clock, and it'll be people from Metro, the Gang Crimes Bureau will be here to talk, help us to understand the history and the morphing that occurs with new hybrid gangs. You know, there are all kinds of cliches about gangs, but they're come in all colors. And you have all white gangs, you have brown gangs, Latino gangs, you have black gangs, you have mixed-race gangs, you have a lot of these kinds of things, gangs involved in drugs, prostitution, and extortion. Yet they are mostly invisible. You can't always assume that you see somebody wearing a red, or a black, or a green color, meaning somehow, or they're in a gang. Come on by and see this, and if, you know, you see this broadcast today or tonight, I urge you to call your friends and come on down to the city hall and see what we have to offer, because it's an eye-opener, and it's better for you to be informed, and you can go back and tell your neighbors what you saw. You can pick up literature here, take it home, and spread it through Facebook and other social media. We do our very best, and there's two hours of free parking for anybody that's interested right across the street, on Main Street, from, right across the street from our building. Also, Mayor, you and I, on the 13th, are going to have a lot of fun. We're going to cut the ribbon at the brand-new Stupac Park. There's, that's, you know, in the shadow of the Stupac Tower, I call it the Stupac Tower, the stratosphere, and it's Las Vegas' newest park, built on a half an acre, and we're going to have some microscopic children playing a micro soccer game on this micro park, and we'll have a soccer clinic put on by members of the Ribble Soccer Team. This, the address is 300 West Boston. Folks, come on down, it starts at 3:30, but it'll run a few hours, and I think you'll have a lot of fun, and you'll be amazed at what we are doing in what we called the naked city, the meadow- we are doing in what we called the Naked City, the Meadows, other notorious names, in any event, that's an area that is seeing a resurgence in growth and safety, and so come on down and take a look at the new Stupac Park, which is right across the street from the Stupac Community Center. Then, on March 15th, we'll have the shredding party, our own shredding party, in the Kmart parking lot at Bonanza and Nellis, that, that party, sorry for the staff, if I got that out of order, you know, that's for everybody, it doesn't matter what part of town you live in, just try to limit your, your, your delivery here to five boxes, we'll shred them and keep it secure. Lawyers are welcome, not all lawyers have a lot of money, but a lot of lawyers have a lot of secure, sensitive documents, and that goes for doctors too, so you bring it, think about it, it's better than maybe having to pay somebody a lot of money to come and shred them at your office. If you and your staff wanna bring down, no more than five boxes per vehicle, we'll do the very best we can to take care of you. So, this is important, and tax time is here, and there's an awful lot of your personal documents floating around, maybe you've, maybe you've saved your tax documents for way too many years, you don't have to check with your accountant, but a lot of that you can get rid of, and I suggest bringing it to the Kmart at Nellis and Bonanza, Saturday the 15th, to help us get rid of them for you. On the 21st, at the East Las Vegas Community Center, we will have the Latino Network of Southern Nevada Summit, this has been building for some time, this is an event for all in the community, but meetings have been taking place for months, there are almost 200 people already registered to attend. You're gonna find this to be a way to expand your role in the Latino community, and for those who are curious about what the Latino community does in this town, I urge them to stop by and take a look, just monitor and see what happens, and you'll have your eyes open, for sure. It starts at 8:30 with registration and continental breakfast, and then at 9:00 until noon, this program will go on. If you want RSVP for attendance, please call our office, ask for Felipe, Felipe Ortiz, his number is 229-6405, 229-6405, it is right there on the bottom of the form for you to take a look at. Finally, Your Honor, March 22nd, we have a neighborhood cleanup, and that's in the old Mayfair area, which I like to say is between essentially Maryland Parkway and Bruce, on the east and west, and Fremont on the north, and Charleston on the south, along with some other neighborhoods scattered there in the triangle between Charleston and Fremont and Las Vegas Boulevard. Those are areas that don't always get these kind of services, but to make sure that you're, you're not missed, because you may be in a neighborhood that is not densely packed with residential, it may be mostly offices, but you've got a residence in there, you can call our office to double-check and make sure that, that you don't get missed. Republic will be by to pick up just about anything, the do's and don'ts are real simple, trees and brush have to be less than 50 pounds in a bundle, per bundle, and they have to be less than six feet long, take off doors on refrigerator, stoves, and washers, dryers, and small stuff should be in a bag that's tied, and not more than 50 pounds per bag, just don't put out hazardous materials like paint, oil, tires, batteries, they have a special service for that kind of thing. So, that's a good thing to take care of, that's a neighborhood cleanup, coming to one of the oldest parts of Las Vegas, we try to keep it clean, but we need your help, public, to, to keep the area clean. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Beers.
Thanks, Your Honor, I think this qualifies as irony, I've received an email from a licensed registered nurse complaining about me comparing them to licensed DMTs. Since, since I'm offending everyone today, I'd like to offer this micro soccer ball to Councilman Coffin, for him to use in his micro soccer game at his micro park. If you'd like to complain in person about me-
I guarantee you, it will be more than just a little fur ball, pushing gate ball-
No doubt.
-around the court, yeah.
Coffee with the Councilmen in Ward Two will be on Friday, March 14th, 7:30 to 9:00 in the morning, we're gonna be at the New Avery's Coffee, in the Village Square Shopping Center. This is a little independent coffee shop, started about six weeks ago, and it's really quite nice, in the corner of the Village Square Shopping Center, Friday, March 14th. And on March 27th, 5:30 to 7:30 in the evening, we'll be having Beers with Beers at Calico Jack's, which is on West Buffalo, or West Charleston, just west of Buffalo, and we'd love to hear from constituents, or any other interested resident, even if you're not in Ward Two. And finally, if there is an issue with that sixth box, at the joint Ward Three and Six, no, One and Six, Shred-a-thon will take care of it. No, actually, we're gonna have a Ward Two-only Shred-a-thon up to, up at, at the city's Veterans' Memorial Leisure Service Center, 101 North Pavilion Center Boulevard, Saturday, March 29th, from 10:00 in the morning until noon, bring your stuff by, and we will shred it. Please try to take staples and clips out of your purse first, that's not my mic. And that's all I have, Your Honor.
Goodness, we can unload 15 boxes, if we go from one to the next, to the next, I love this, I'm gonna load up. Okay, please, Councilman Ross.
Thank you, Mayor, I always, always ask Councilman Beers this after he does his little announcement for Beers with Beers, are you buying? Still not buying, still not buying. And just a couple of comments, Mayor, with your permission, to a couple of my colleagues, I understand that Councilman Barlow, with the bluegrass thing, you're, you're gonna start, rumor has it through the hallways, you're picking up on, learning the harmonica, any truth to that?
Harmonica.
Harmonica. You just looked at me. And, there he goes, my, my, my good councilman at the end there, Councilman Coffin, is actually a superhero to me right now, because he has offered to help raise money for the downtown scout units, who are less fortunate than other scout units, by, by hurling his body off of the stratosphere. So, I'm looking forward to that on, on the 28th, Councilman, I will be there and support you 110 percent.
And of course, you've committed your organs, I'm sure.
They're all worn out, Your Honor, they're all worn out, there won't be any takers.
Oh, I think there's something going on between the ears.
Besides, I think they'll be flattened.
Oh, my gosh.
You know what, but those, those Boy Scouts will certainly remember this sacrifice, Councilman, so thank you for your commitment to that. Anyway, our continued relationship and partnership with Nevada Childseekers, we do have a missing young lady, her name is Dalen Betancourt, she is 17 years old, she's five foot four, weighs about 110 pounds, of course, brown eyes, brown hair, she was last seen in the area of Cheyenne and Martin Luther King Boulevard, so it's unknown what she was last wearing, or seen wearing, but she may be carrying a backpack with her personal belongings, please, please, let's get her home, if you know anything about the whereabouts of this young lady, please contact Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, 702-828-3111, or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. Thank you very much, Mayor and Councilmembers.
Thank you, and just very quickly, join me for Coffee with Mayor Pro Tem, Stavros Anthony, March 27th, at the Omelette House, that's the Omelette House, at 227 North Rampart, off of that and Lake Mead, we hope you'll take this opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas, and that's for Ward Four, Coffee with the Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. On Saturday, March 15th, I'll be at the Starting Line once again, for the fabulous Runaway with Cirque du Soleil 5K Race and Walk, at our beloved Springs Preserve, the race starts at 8:00 a.m., and for more information and to register, please go to circdusole.com. Also, on Saturday, 15th, after, I guess, one's right after the other, I'll run, then I'm going to be throwing out the first pitch for our favorite magnificent Miracle League, that is right off Rancho, and just south of the 95, the address at 9:15, at Central Christian Church, 101 South Rancho, it's a wonderful, wonderful event, special baseball park for those who really are challenged, but just love the sport and love to participate. Our next city council meeting will be held here in Chambers, Wednesday, 19th, beginning at 9:00 a.m. And so, with nothing else to do, and thank you, our dear lawyer down there, and thank you all, and this meeting is adjourned until then. Thank you.